Okay, welcome, okay, welcome everyone. Thank you for joining. My name is Mark Kiefer. I'm the chairman and this is I'm called to order the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission Public Hearing. At 5:04 PM on Thursday, November 20, 2025. This is the November 2025 hearing of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission. In addition to myself, we are joined today by Vice Chair Commissioner Arian Allen as well as Commissioner Jack Commissioners Feingold. And Jackson, I believe Commissioner Steele is not here. Is that right?
That's correct. Sandy's out today. Yep.
Right. Okay. Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order to Spending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the subsequent revisions extending it. We are conducting this meeting online, which is say over Zoom to ensure public access to the deliberations of Beacon Hill Architectural Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing again, as otherwise known as Zoom. If you missed it. The announcement, this hearing is being recorded, so all further conversation between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing as adjourned. At this point, I'd like to acknowledge any media or elected officials. I see Dan Murphy from Beacon Hill Times. Hi, Dan. Thanks for joining. Anyone else, the media or elected officials? I don't see any, but let me scroll through the list here.
Not seeing any, Mark.
Okay, so forgive us if we're not seeing you. We will certainly acknowledge you if we find you later or join later. Let's see where we members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment and applications and discussions. And we will do that during each of the adjudication of each application. So during while we're adjudicated an application, we will give you a heads up that we are going to take public comment. And at that time, if you would like to make a public comment on the record for the subject application, what you'll need to do is just raise your hand quote unquote in the Zoom application, which is probably the button at the bottom, probably on the bottom of your Zoom panel. Nick is going to need to unmute you. Did you see some handy instructions on the screen there? Show you how to do that if you're not familiar with it. And Nick will just need to unmute you and we'll take you public comments in the order in which you identify yourselves. And again, we'll give you the heads up at the time. We're going to take public comments on each application. Okay, I think that's it. Okay, so first on the agenda, are we going to put this off Nick till next month?
Yeah, they're not ready. Yeah, we're gonna just to acknowledge that they were on the schedule. They're not going to be there, so we'll get it next month.
Okay, so on October meeting minutes will be deferred until the December hearing, ratification thereof, that is. So we'll move on to violation review. We've got one item, I believe, which is 2832 Dern Street. Nope, sorry, that was removed by staff. So we're going to move right on to design review. We're humming right along here. That was easy. Okay, so we'll pick that one up by the later hearing as well. So now moving on to design review first on the agenda is nine Lewisburg Square. I think I see Tracy there and then hi Tracy. Let's see. We're looking for Emily, your architect, right? Do you see or can we unmute Emily? And anyone else for nine Lewisburg Square want to be on the the hot mic as it were?
All right, asking Emily and then Tracy. Let's see if we can see Tracy.
Tracy Flannery.
Hi Tracy, nice to see you again.
Hi, everybody. Hello.
Welcome. Thanks for coming in. Do you want to just give us a brief recap? I know we heard an application for this property. I guess it was a couple of months ago, so I understand you've got a new revised design. Thank you for submitting that in a timely fashion. You want to just take us through Emily, what where we where we left off and what you're proposing now?
Sure. Hello to the members of the commission and thank you for hearing us tonight. And we are returning to present an alternate option for the front dormer design of the renovation at nine Lewisburg Square. And this is, these are some images here of the existing building. And if you go to the next one here, the left drawing is the existing conditions of the fifth floor dormer. And the middle drawing is the previous proposal from our hearing in September. And based on the committee's comments, we have returned with a third option, which has the canted sides of the original fifth floor dormer design. And on the following page, we have some 3D renderings just to show what exactly that would look like. So you can see the shape of the dormer. And we still have the historic wood windows with divided lights. Those would be painted a dark color to match the existing trim. And we'll have new slate roof and copper roofing. And we are removing the original railing across the front. So this was the only area that was denied at the last meeting and we have, we're presenting this for your approval.
Okay, thank you very much, Emily. And just a couple of quick clarifying questions. So I think goes without saying because it's evident from the rendering here. But the the fenestration on the front of this has not changed from your prior proposal. Correct? And then secondly, I think this would appear to reflect, I think, the end of the conversation at the prior hearing in terms of a direction. There were, I think, at least a couple of commissioners. I was not among them, but who felt that they wanted to see the sort of trapezoid shape of this of the dormer preserved, which is exactly what you've done. And then I think the further direction is what to do with the sides of it. So the window has been removed and replaced by here's my my basic question because I'm afraid I can't quite read it from the image here. Is that a recessed panel or an applied molding or both?
That would be a recessed panel with an with a panel molding in it.
Okay, not that it probably matters from the distance from which you would see this, particularly given it's from the public way on on Pinkney Street in terms of this view, but is the is the panel molding simply inside the recess or is it proud of the surface of the rest of it at all?
Well, to be honest, we haven't focused on that in detail yet, but what I would say that we would do is we would copy the panel that is in the Oriole window on the fourth floor.
Right, okay.
And we could return to show you details of that if it were needed.
Well, I not from my perspective at the moment, I just wanted to be clear as to because I believe the direction I recall, and I think Ralph, you should jump in here if I mischaracterize this, but there was a suggestion perhaps by Commissioner Jackson that indeed you treat this space with a panel, which is what you've done. I just wanted to get a little better understanding of what it was. Thank you. Any other clarifying questions about again? And again, the only thing that is the subject of this current review is the revised plan of the dormer, which we're seeing here. Far left again recap is what's there now? The middle is what they proposed last time. The right is the revision based on comments from the prior hearing. Any other clarifying questions from the commission before we take public comment? Okay, hearing none.
Sorry. Why excuse me?
Commissioner Feingold, please go ahead.
Why was the decision made not to have any fenestration in the in these flanks as we might describe them? Like in the first image, there's some opening. I realize this this current recommendation is quite fine as far as I'm concerned, but it misses. It misses having the opening on the on those on those slope flanks. But why is there no opening though?
Um, well, mostly it's due to our interior program. So we are blocking that space off for built in wall cabinetry. But also the original design. And we were using this middle option and it didn't make sense to have windows there. So our modification here that the interior design remain the same. And so the windows didn't work there.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Again, just commissioners for the moment clarifying questions just to understand what we're looking at. Okay, why don't we go ahead and take public comment again? If you want to be heard on the record, you will need to quote raise your hand in the Zoom, which is probably the button on the bottom of your Zoom panel and just raise your hand and Nick will unmute you in turn.
Hey, first up we have is Rochelle from Civic Association. Rochelle, go ahead.
Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose the new proposed modifications to the dormer as a traditional gridded sashes and solid chamfered corners satisfy guideline A3 for new work. The roofline has not been altered satisfying guideline C1 and the proposal satisfies guideline A4 that requires architectural changes to be appropriate to the original Greek Revival style. Additionally, the front facing windows satisfy guideline A7 as the size of the window openings has not been altered, but we suggest keeping the windows on the chamfered sides would more fully satisfy that same guideline. End of comment.
Okay, thank you Rochelle. Mark, I'm not seeing any other public comments, so we can close public comment and turn it back to you.
Great, thank you. Thanks Rochelle. Okay. Like Commissioner Feingold, well, I don't have to speak for Commissioner Feingold, but I am fine with it. I was fine with the the prior proposal. I think this is a sensitive response, I believe, to what the comments that were received last time or given last time. So does anyone else have a view either affirming that or to the contrary?
I'll affirm.
So so you're good with it, Ralph?
Yes.
Great. Okay, anyone else? Okay, so I think it sounds like we have a consensus. I will. And Nick, can you just remind me, forgive me, I'm not quite remembering where we left off. Did we just deny the whole thing without prejudice or did we stipulate anything with respect to the windows last time?
It was a denial, Rob, prejudice just for the the sides of the dormer. So there was no stipulation about the windows.
Okay, yeah. So do we have a determination already that specifies things like, you know, true divided lights, no lowie glass, that kind of thing for the windows?
It's always good to be redundant if you'd like.
Sure. Okay. And I don't, I can't imagine that would run afoul of whatever we might have said last time. Okay, I will move that the application be approved as submitted with the following provisos, that the fenestration in the dormer be constructed to with true divided lights, wood windows with true divided lights and no lowie glass.
So moved.
Is that a second, Commissioner Feingold?
Yes.
Okay, it's my move in second and we will vote Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Feingold.
Hi.
Commissioner Jackson.
Hi.
And Commissioner Kiefer outside. Okay, thank you very much, Emily and Tracy. You get a letter from Nick just confirming our determination. If you have any questions, once you get that, please follow up with Nick directly. Thanks for coming in.
Sounds good. Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is 170 Charles Street. Someone from 170 Charles.
Yes, I'm here, Agnes.
Hi, Agnes, welcome.
You're good. I'm the I'm Agnes Hayes, the general manager at the Whitney Hotel. And all we're doing is, do you have my PDF that I sent? There we go. So we have just one very simple request. We are looking to add this little lovely menu board to the exterior right in front of the Whitney Hotel on 170 Charles Street. So we haven't quite determined just from a marketing perspective, what location is best. So we're either looking to put on the exterior post or on the interior post of this brick column.
Okay. Now, just for our clarification here, this is that's facing the street. Yeah.
Facing the street. And then this would be basically facing like heading down Charles Street. So it's the yes, so it's the first pillar right there where the valet sign is.
Right, okay.
Right there or on the door.
Area. Yeah, okay. Uh, and so this is a display box in our parlance as we call them technically, which you see throughout Charles Street in a number of places. And it contains the menu and so forth. Can you just go back to the image of the proposed box? Because I think you quite conveniently given us an indication of the scale. Yeah, very good. Okay. And it's illuminated from the inside. Is that correct?
The top part will be illuminated. Correct.
Okay. And I take it that you're going to attach it. I see a cord hanging out of there, but that would
Yeah, we'll electrical work.
Yeah, so that that'll be interior to the thing you'll you'll another do you will be no conduit or anything like that?
No.
Okay. And that's it. So we're just talking about this display box we're looking at right here.
That is correct.
Okay, commissioners, any other clarifying questions as to what's proposed? And it's just the one, right? It's going to either go on the in this sort of in border on the outside, but just the one.
Exactly. Right now, we're just we're starting with one board. We may decide to add another board at another time. So I'm guessing that we'll have to go through the same approval if we do that. Yes, so one board for now.
Okay. Commissioners, any other clarifying questions about what's proposed?
Is the proposal for the sidewall of the columns or the street face of the column?
Well, and we'd like to get approval for both. We haven't quite decided. We're thinking that it's going to go exterior because that's where the public can see it better.
Yes, but the brickwork on your building is so nice. Seeing it on a sidewall would seem to my mind to be more or have multiple on sidewalls would be more honoring the the exterior expression of the building. It's a really handsome building and to suddenly place signs along the street wall, I think is so problematic.
Well, for what it's worth, Agnes, is it fair to say that, you know, to a first approximation, you're the the design of this thing is to to intended to be in concert with the the metalwork elsewhere, the sign to the far left for the hotel and then the light fixture to the right.
Yeah, it all matches. It all matches. It's all black, all metal. Yes. So I mean, you know, the purpose of this is to obviously, you know, generate more business into the restaurant. So there's no, you know, right now we have limited signage out front that indicates that we have the Peregrine Restaurant in the lobby at the Whitney Hotel. So we just want to, you know, draw more attention by having a lighted sign out there with a posted menu for people to see and, you know, come in and enjoy the restaurant.
Right, okay. Any other questions before we take public comment?
I mean, just just looking at it, because it is, it's a very beautiful building.
Okay, shown in the rendering in this particular image is seems really strong, especially if it's going to be illuminated. Um, I this seems like like a better position for something like that rather than several of them on the face of the building.
I agree with that. Um, because especially since it's going to be illuminated on top, it would make more sense for it to be on the inside than on the front of the building. I think if you put it on the front of the building, it takes away a lot of the beauty and character.
Well, let's tell you what, let's let's table that for for the for the just for the moment. So we can get public comment and then we'll come back to the discussion. Anyone want to be heard? Let's go ahead and take public comment. If you want to be heard on the record. Please raise your hand in the Zoom and Nick will call anyone unmute you.
Okay, first up is Rochelle. Oh, it's Civic Association. Rochelle, go ahead.
Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose the location of the new signboard on the cortical column as guideline I10 only prohibits the use of temporary advertising on exterior wall and guideline I9 allows a single display box in addition to one single sign per business and projecting sign per building. The building does currently have two signs for the hotel business and six window decals for the restaurant business. We do however oppose illumination as it does not satisfy guideline I12, which prohibits backlit signs. End of comment.
Okay, thanks Rochelle. And Mark, not seeing any other public comments, sorry.
Okay, so just by way of background, and it's a good segue, actually appreciate Rochelle pointing out. When I was on the commission, the first time we we added this display box guideline in effect to ratify a lot of existing display boxes, but there have since been a number of new applications or applications for new ones. With respect to the placement and more specifically the suggestion that at some point the applicant may wish to come back and add another one. Strictly speaking, guideline I9 says graphics should be limited to a single sign and or display box per business except for one additional projecting sign per building. I don't know of any instance where an applicant has proposed or requested more than one display box. And so I think the consistent understanding that both motivated the addition of the display box guideline, you know, some a decade or more ago, more than that. And that has prevailed as the common understanding of what it means since then is that display boxes would be limited to one per business. And so I would be reluctant to entertain a proposal to put two of them in there. And I think I mentioned all this because it has that it has implications both for well, directly for for how we think about where it ought to go. It the other thing I would mention is that I believe it is and Nick chime in here if if you if you know more, but that it is certainly very common for display boxes on Charles Street to be on the front facade of the building, which is to say facing the street because of course their ostensible purpose is to make people pastors by aware of the business and so forth. And so that that's kind of kind of goes with the territory as it were. There are examples where they are not on the front, but they are inside of a vestibule, for example, just a few feet from the street analogous to what's proposed here. So it's not that they're universally on the front, but they are commonly on the front. So I think I'm also, I think nervous about given that this is we have always understood display boxes got by the way, guideline I9 is under the sign guidelines. So we have always understood them to be a type of sign. And so I think I'm reluctant and and would would resist attempts to further regulate display boxes, you know, with respect to the architecture of the building. Because again, I think they're signs. And so while we recognize, appreciate Commissioner Jackson's comments about the not wanting to otherwise disturb an otherwise fine facade and so forth. But I think that to me is is too strict a requirement for signs. I think I'm more comfortable simply considering them the way we have considered signs in general, you know, that their number and the scale and so forth is appropriate to its architectural context and so forth. In my opinion, that that looser requirement has been met here because it's it's modest in scale, particularly for the size of this building. It's been designed specifically to harmonize with the other few exterior architectural accoutrements, the sign, the light fixture and so forth. And so I think it fits in very well. So I think my view of this is I would be okay with either location. I would not insist on it being on the inside. I think I'm fine with it being on the outside and I'm but I want to stress that I don't believe we ought to effectively you know, give guidance to this applicant that would imply that another display box for this location would be later approved.
Understood.
Any other thoughts, commissioners? And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to shut off the debate before, but so Arian and Ralph, that's kind of where I am coming from on this. I think I think it's a sensitive design and I I don't know that we want to be in the business of saying you can't put a display box on the front just because admittedly you really like the facade of the building. I think it's just the nature of signs is going to disrupt the architecture a little bit and we just have to make sure it does it as tastefully and sensitively as possible. I think they they're doing that here.
So she's gonna be, it's gonna be illuminated. So it's gonna be one sign on a street that's pretty much not having the signs illuminated. It's gonna be just shining out in the middle of the night on the sidewalk. Just.
Well, it's 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 backlit though. It's not, it's not, and I should say, I should have mentioned before, sorry, Arian. The there are a number of these Nick again, chime in if I'm mischaracterizing anything, but there are a number of these display boxes that are similarly illuminated on Charles Street now. It's it's simply to allow you to read the content at night. They're not bright lights. I don't think that's what's proposed here. In fact,
Be turned off at night.
Yeah. Oh, it would be okay. I mean, but
Yeah, we could do that.
Substantially less bright than any of the other signs that are now illuminated. And there there are a number of those, but we're really just talking about something that's but again, backlit, all the lighting would be interior to the box. So I think the amount of light that spills onto the street would be pretty minimal.
The minimal.
And Nick, what's the step on this?
Yeah, I I think this meets meets the criteria of being one of the display boxes for a menu. I think this is perfectly appropriate, especially considering the modern design of the building and I would recommend approval as submitted.
Wow, I don't think it's of the caliber of the light fixtures on the exterior on the facade of the building. But
I have a different opinion.
Commissioner Feingold, please go ahead.
Doesn't surprise you. In my personal experience of walking along any street and coming upon a restaurant, I always want to step out of the way to to find and then read the signboard. I I think just sort of human behavior, you you I mean, you kill choice commissioner, but I I don't believe it should be on the face of the building. Just because human condition is you step aside to read the signboard. You 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 don't read it in the crowd of passersby. So I I support the the only the suggestion that it be on the side as shown in this image before us and I guess that's my opinion. And I certainly don't think I certainly believe we should not hint at all that a future sign such as this a second sign would be approved because it would that would be a violation of the guideline.
I I agree with you Mo and with you Ralph that on the side, it does make more sense because yes, you have traffic, people walking up and down the sidewalk and you would want to step to the side to actually read it.
The architect, in this particular instance, she's fortunate enough to have an arcade. You know, so there's a place to step aside and read the menu. And there are other commercial spaces on the street only have the front facade. She has options.
Agreed.
Just for what it's worth. So one other consideration, again, I think I just want to stress, I think it's really important that we understand a display box is a sign for for all intents and purposes, right? There is no sign for the restaurant. It's I not that it's neither here nor there, but I have found that rather surprising over the over the years. This would be the only sign for the restaurant. Agnes, am I correct in that in that?
Yes, the only signage that we have is on the windows right now.
And is it also in fact the case that, okay, so there is some on the windows. Okay. And there's no projecting sign on this building at all, right?
That says Peregrine, correct. All we have are signs that say the Whitney Hotel.
Okay, but is there one that is like a hanging sign projecting from the building? It's just a flat one, right?
No hanging signs.
Okay, so
So we have that one on the left. And then there's just one on the other side and then on these exterior windows is where there where it says Peregrine.
I see. Okay. Because just for what it's worth, you would still Um, because just for what it's worth, uh, you would still. Uh, by rights. You know, we would entertain. The addition of a projecting sign. Uh, and this again, Ralph is kind of where I'm coming from that. Um, just the nature of signs is that they're installed in prominent places so they can serve their functional. Uh, purpose and so forth, um. But uh, so.
Wouldn't the signs still be?
Not realize how aware I am.
I'm sorry, we had a little cross talk there, can you say that again, Ralph?
You might not be aware of how aware I am.
Yeah.
Signage and its location.
No, no, I'm just saying, uh, no, of course, uh, I I appreciate that, I I just uh. Um. I I guess I'm just reluctant to require in this instance. Uh, a standard that we have not. Required of similarly situated. Other applicants, no one else. Uh, who's.
They have been so rigorous about the other signage not being on. Uh, being in recesses and not being on the face of the building. Um, and this is a really special building relative to the other buildings on the street. Um, but I I feel as if it's um. It's it's really, I I think Mo's notion of. How one looks at a a dinner sign. Uh, one wants to get out of the the uh, the path of traffic. So forth and so on, uh, that makes sense, but um, obviously, uh. I don't consider the uh. The sign of the caliber of the light fixtures on the exterior of the building. Um. And it's going to be a light fixture on this exterior of the building. Uh, but um. You know, I don't have the last word, so. Please.
Well, I. I think it's kind of interesting because. You know, thankfully she came here with the idea of either the front or the side. It seems like three was for the side. And that's something that that was already presented to us, so it's not going against. The wishes of the applicant. Because we were given the the options. And it seems like at least a few was interested in that side option.
Intuition, I thought was right on.
Yeah.
So um. Nick, I I can't find it in 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 uh. Google Maps because it's blurred out unfortunately, but just thinking of a of a couple of analogies here. Um. Beacon Hill Hotel being one, the other end of the street. Um. Tuscano being another. What do we know about? The location of the display boxes, I believe they both have them.
Tuscano's is recessed. Yeah.
This is an incredibly different.
Yes.
Urban situation. Um, it's not comparable to uh, uh. A restaurant set only have the front facade.
I think it is comparable if we're talking about what we've approved and how we've interpreted our guidelines and so forth. We need to make reference to. Our prior record decision and understanding, I think what's fair. Uh, and what's appropriate.
Isn't it fair? Because this is an option that she in in the presentation. She provided this option, so this is not being unfair. This is an option that has been provided. So I'm 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 become a little confused. As to this pushback because this is something that she actually provided as an option.
Uh, my concern Arian is um. As I. I think tried to articulate before, just requiring a higher standard of one applicant than we than we would for others. Uh, but let me ask Agnes on the on Fisher Allen's prior point. To be clear, understanding now as we've described. That the display box guideline. Calls specifically for one display box per business and that that's what it says, it's what we meant when we. Enacted it and it's what we have used to guide our decisions ever since. Understanding that it's pretty much one display box per business, does that change your? Uh, view about where you want this thing?
Well, I mean, yes, if we're if we're only allowed one, then obviously we would want it on the exterior because we feel that that's where the most exposure would be. Um, you know, I think that the sidewalk is is wide enough that it's not going to create. A traffic jam of people walking down, stopping and then, you know. Prohibiting other people from, you know, walking down the sidewalk. Um, so you know, that's going to give us the most exposure, obviously. Um, you know, if we do it on the interior, people will still see it, but again, you know, we're not. Um, you know, we won't be able to take advantage of every person. Coming and going in both directions, so we're limited.
Well, uh, that's why I promote the notion of uh. More than one and mount them on the side of the columns because the traffic is going. Um, back and forth. But um. I'm just one person who apparently uh.
But Ralph, you understand, just just to be clear, since this, I don't know that this is. We've we've had any of these, maybe we have, but. Uh, I don't know if it's come up before, since you've been on the commission, but just to be clear. Again, the the guideline, it's not it's not set in stone, it's not law, but but the guideline um, is uh, says one display box per. Um. Per per business and and I'm just trying to be consistent with that and I think.
I'm sorry, but the architecture is so different from the other buildings on the street. Um. I lean in the direction, I lean in. But um, if you want to stick with your guidelines, then yes, go right ahead, mounted on the face of the building.
I don't see why. In this case. It couldn't be approved. With the uh, in with the overriding uh, opinion of the commissioners. Uh, that had that the choice. Uh, be on the inside. But it isn't required, but but they but the owner has the option. Is that too ambiguous?
Well, as practical matter, we we have to specify what is permitted. Um, we we could, we can certainly um.
Well, you can say it's, you can say it 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 it's permitted, it it's approved, the designer's approved. Uh, it. You, they have the right to have it, you know, sort of where they want it, I guess, but. The the impression is that it'd be more discreet. Not to obscure the the fact that there's a restaurant, everybody would know that the hotel has a restaurant. I mean, it that's required. Oh, there aren't hotels without restaurants. So it wouldn't be a surprise that there's a restaurant. So that would be. Uh, it would be, you know, always to me. Anyway, that I pointed out, I I like to go find those signs, I know they're available. Sometimes you have to go inside and ask to see one, but mostly they're posted outside. Uh, and. I just think discretion. Visual discretion in this instance. Uh, uh.
Nice.
Can you put that into a motion, uh? Mr. Fine Gold.
Oh, my goodness, sir. Yes. I move that the submission. Uh, be approved. Uh, as presented. Uh. With the proviso. That the owner consider. Uh, locating. Its location, it's the the commissioners prefer the location to be on the side of the brick pier. Rather than facing the the street. But the choice, but the choice, uh, but by. Uh, by right, uh, is the is the owners. Something like that.
Okay, could I offer one friendly amendment simply to say, uh, some commissioners? That way?
Cameron, I don't know.
I mean, I think this might be one commissioner that feels that way.
Yes. I think there's at least two.
I think it's just one.
I think there's at least two.
Is there two? Where's two?
Mr. Jackson, Mr. Jackson. I thought you were with me too, uh.
Yeah.
Yes, I am. Three of us are. Pro side elevation.
Okay, could 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 we be more definitive in our motion though for guidance for the applicant? Um, precisely where do we want this to go?
I'd like for it to go where she shows it.
Well, Mo, is it since there's a motion on the table, just procedurally here, there is, it's it's the motion's been made. Uh. Um. Am I, let me just try to restate it, Mo, and tell me if I if I've got it. Uh, that the the application. Uh. It's it's a motion to approve the application as submitted. Uh. Uh, with the choice of whether to locate the display box either on the. Uh, street facing side or on the uh, interior of the column to be left to the applicant. Uh, with the uh, understanding that. Certain commissioners uh, expressed a preference that it be located on the inboard side.
Uh.
Uh, not inboard, side elevation.
Side, yes.
Yeah, the right, the side of the column.
I mean, if you say inboard, that's a whole new ball.
Sounds like it's on the backside.
Yeah, right.
Okay, side of the column.
Yes. Yeah, that. And you're using your phraseology rather than mine, that gets the essence of it, yes, sir.
Okay, uh, I I, uh, Nick, is that enough? Okay, uh, do I hear it, do I hear a second on the on the revised motion?
It sounds very convoluted, I I gotta say, I'm not gonna, you know. I'm I don't want to jam anybody up. And I'm not trying to take anybody's freedoms away. But you know, I thought the point of this commission was for us to actually. Be forthright and say. No. No, that's why I'm talking, um.
I second it.
It it doesn't sound, it's really forced. Being forced right, like we're going with him, it's like.
Come it, come it.
We've we've got a motion on the table, Mo, I think it'd be better if someone else seconded because you you made the original one.
I second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. On the revised motion, uh, we will vote, uh. Commissioner Allen.
No.
Mr. Feingold.
Hi.
Mr. Jackson.
Hi.
And Fisher Kiefer votes aye, okay, so the motion passes, which means it's approved. Uh, Agnes, thanks for your for for your diligence on this, you will get a letter from Nick. Describing what just happened. If you have any questions, just follow up with him directly, he'd be happy to help you, uh, but uh, you should be good to go.
All right, thank you, thank you, everybody, appreciate it. Bye bye.
Beautiful building.
Yeah. Yeah, it was.
Let's see. Next on the agenda is ninety four, ninety four Charles Street. Uh, is a representative from ninety four Charles Street. That is just looking at my agenda here. Uh, William Hardy. Or another representative from ninety four Charles. For HVAC equipment at the rear. Boy wants. You see William.
Raise your hand if you're William.
Or anyone else for ninety four?
There he is, there he is, okay, oh, that's Arian. There you go.
Okay. I think we just need to unmute.
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't unmute for some reason.
Is that William?
Yes.
Hi, William, thank you for for coming in, now you want to just give us a brief summary of what you're proposing?
Yes, um, so I actually talked to Nick before doing this application. We are replacing an air handler inside the building of the ground floor. We are unable to test the line set that goes to the roof for the condenser. So before doing the project, removing the air handler, I'm applying to put. Uh, the condenser in a potential setting if the current line set is damaged on the exterior of the building. So the first picture shows us uh, the backside of our building. As well as uh, where that is from Google Maps. And then the two yellow squares in the first picture show potential areas where that outdoor exterior condenser would go. Um, the second page, Nick, shows. Um, just down the street on that same um. Side street that there are existing conditions with condensers on the exterior of the building. And I show what our outdoor unit is specced to be, so a smaller um, shower unit. And then per recommendation, um, for this, when we are happy to do so, on the third page. I show kind of just a a visual uh, on how we would uh, protect it as well. Uh, make it look a little nicer as we were, you know, happy to, if if that unit does go on the exterior of the building. We're happy to put some nice wood paneling uh, to cover it so you don't see it.
Okay, thank you, and just. Uh, yeah, Mr. Fine, go go ahead.
All right, I beg your pardon, but please re-explain where where the location is, I missed that and.
So the 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 building address is ninety four Charles Street. Uh, this is the alleyway behind Charles Street, so one corner is Tate. Um, and the other corner is. Um. A women's clothing store, I can't remember, but it's the river, it's the River Street Place. My, is that right, Nicholas, my?
Yeah.
River Street Place.
So you know, the river house, Mo, we're across the street from the river house, it's that alley that.
Thank you, okay.
There we go. And it, it's it's actually Public Alley three O one. Um, that goes to about center to about, I think it's about here, but regardless, it's a public street or a public alley. Um, so it is under our purview and um, thanks to Rochelle for for showing, calling that out. But yes, so this is this entire alley back here is our purview because it's public.
And Nick, show us the subject property, right, uh, which one is it?
It's this property right here, let me just get my little.
With the bright blue uh, uh, trash can at the bottom.
Yes.
Very good. Very good.
Channeling my Ralph Jackson.
Yeah, very nice.
You're better.
Uh, okay, that's very helpful, uh, any other clarifying questions? So so this would be on the ground, basically where those trash bins are at the moment.
We would put, um, yeah, they wouldn't be directly on the ground.
Uh, right, but. Ground level.
Padding, we'd put concrete padding and some insulation vapor barrier under it.
And while we're here, uh, William, can you just give us very roughly, since those trash bins are conveniently. Giving us a sense of scale there, how tall is this relative to say one of those bins?
So the unit is probably half the size of that bin from a height wise, and then I would say with. One and a half. It's probably, I I have the dimensions, the dimensions are in that spec. Um. Thirty nine inches tall, thirty seven inches wide.
And how deep is it?
Twelve and a half.
Yeah, okay, so it's uh, and it's maybe it's on a little platform or something, so it's it's a little taller, but still, like you wouldn't even see it right now. If it was behind the bins, right?
That's correct, and and per conversations, um, we originally had maybe even thought about fixing it to the building. But we realized that it would have been better due to the public alleyway, being able to hide it, to fix it to the ground.
Right, okay. Um, any other clarifying questions?
Your proposed sketch. Uh, of the exterior wooden enclosure. Uh, 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 demonstrates a much bigger scale than thirty nine inches. But you're saying that's what it is to be there, oh, there's a barrel there, I see that.
If you go up, I think Nick, to the second slide. That's the air handler, it says outdoor unit specs, that is the specific air handler that we will be using, or sorry, excuse me. The specific condenser is the Dyke Air.
I get that, but what, how, but the the wooden enclosure seems to be much higher than that.
That was just an example I used.
All right, thank you.
So it would be about as high as the unit itself and is as, so a little bit bigger all the way around, but not by much.
We would, we would correctly scale. The outdoor coverage to just cover the unit.
Right, okay. Uh. Anything else clarifying questions before we take public comment?
No.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that, if you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand in the zoom, I'm using the button at the bottom of your panel, Nick will. Unmute you.
All right, first up is uh, Rochelle, Rochelle, go ahead.
Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose the proposed HVAC concealed tragedy, but suggest locating the equipment on the roof would be more appropriate. And satisfy guideline A nine to not be visible from a public way. If ground level is the only alternative, a traditional vertical slap fence similar to nearby properties would be more appropriate. If ground level is the only alternative, a traditional vertical slap fence similar to nearby properties would be more appropriate to meet Guideline A three for new work of appropriate detail, end of comment.
Thank you, Rochelle, anyone else?
Not seeing the other mark.
Well, we have you, Rochelle, can you just clarify that last statement, are you saying, just in terms of an enclosure like this scaled to the thing with the vertical fence, or are you talking about an actual fence? That would be a lot longer than the unit itself.
Our application includes photos of neighboring fences, like next door and across the alley.
Right, no, I, I, I understand you're, you're talking about the, the treatment, but I, because it occurs to me that if, if one was gonna entertain a, you know, some screening for this stuff, you know, and one way to do that would be to just enclose the whole lot of that stuff that's back there, right? Just run a short, a, a not very tall fence across the back of the building that would enclose this thing and the garbage cans. But is that what you're suggesting, Rochelle, or you're just talking about what the screen, what the enclosure is made of? How it's made?
Per height, we don't have a comment because the application didn't provide a height for us to review.
Okay, I'm talking, talking about the width, not the height, but.
I thought she was talking about changing the, the, the siding from horizontal to vertical.
Yeah.
I don't think it matters then.
Yes, but she used the word fence, and I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what you're suggesting, Rochelle, that are you suggesting a, a fence that would run the width of the property and enclose this and everything else back there? Or just something a, a little bit bigger than the AC unit?
No, we're just talking about the screening system proposed.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, um, okay, any other public comment before we close that?
Oh, the public comment, Mark.
Okay, um, I'm fine with it either way, I, I do, I like the suggestion to try to mimic the, the way these, these, what Rochelle is talking about is sort of the sort of typical treatment, it's not, you know, universal back there, but it's way it's been done, I'm not hard over about it, because again, this is, it's technically a public way, because it's a public alley, but it's this obviously utterly functional utilitarian, I'm trying to be polite here, but a part of the building that's, you know, basically a, a place to keep garbage bins and so forth, and it's blocked by the bins and the cars and everything else, and so I think the visual impact of this thing is gonna be really de minimis. So I, I wouldn't even insist on the screening fence, but I think it's a, it's a nice suggestion, and I think one that was appropriately scaled for the unit would, would be helpful. Any other views?
I agree with, I agree with.
There are two windows. Is there any relationship between the placement of this between the windows?
Um, good question, it would it would preferably be on the right side of that right window, and the reason being is when you're running a chase of HVAC equipment of a two-pipe system, we wouldn't wanna create as many, you wanna limit the amount of turns you have to make. And so if I, if we are able to run that chase, if you can visualize just going straight down the right side of the building, the inside, the unit on the inside is on that right-hand side. So we wouldn't wanna then run the chase and create, create more internal molding on the, on the, either the exterior of the building or the interior of the building, so ideally, we put it on that right side.
Yes, I was only concerned about its placement relative to the windows, and if you add an enclosure, are you, how do you do it without blocking your windows? But.
Yeah.
Putting it to the right, putting it to the right of the windows would help keep the visual integrity of the window, of the windows intact.
Okay, yep.
Okay, uh, let's see, anything else? Commissioners, what would you think about delegating the final design of the enclosure to staff?
Whoa.
Okay, any, anyone object to that?
No, works.
I don't see why it can't be just approved or submitted.
Uh, well, I don't know that he's actually got a final design for the, for the enclosure, Mo.
Okay.
He's got a, he's got three suggestions of the concept, but.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, no, that's a good question, uh, okay, unless there's further discussion, I don't mean to cut off the debate here, but I move that the application be approved as submitted with the dimensions and a final design of the proposed enclosure delegated to staff.
Second.
Okay, we will vote, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Feingold.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
And Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, thank you very much, William, for coming in, it's approved, and you'll get a letter from Nick summarizing our determination, and we'll just need you to follow up with him to show him what exactly you wanna do, and he can help you figure that out exactly, about exactly what the enclosure should look like, and how it should be made.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, next is, I think it's fifty-two Chestnut, I see Rob Frey down there. There he is. Sorry, we have a typo in the agenda, Rob. No L on Frey.
There's, where's Rob?
He's waiting.
There he is. All right, and then Sean's here too, yeah.
Oh, yes, hi, Sean. There we are.
Hello, good evening.
Okay, good evening, thanks for, guys for coming in, whoever wants to talk, go ahead and, I want you to summarize what you are proposing.
Hello, my name is Sean Kreitz, I'm the owner of Historic Window and Door. Rob Frey and the Frey Group is the builder on the project, he can speak to any items, but, um, a lot of those, I believe, are administratively approved. What I'm here to discuss here is the rear dormer at fifty-two Chestnut, it's actually the Branch Street elevation. Right there. So just a little background, we did all of the windows and teak doors on this property about twenty-six years ago, that got approved. The only thing we didn't go near was that dormer. That dormer, from my research, is a non-original dormer from about the nineteen sixties. The existing windows, and I don't know why we didn't approach it years ago, but it wasn't as bad as condition as it is now. So currently, it's that yellowish-green color, there is five, eight light, I won't say left-handed reverse, right-handed reverse, they all swing out casement windows in that existing dormer. They all have failed insulated glass units, rotten wood, and they're in very poor condition. From some of the interior photos that I sent, you can tell that I think almost all the insulated glass units are failed currently. The current owner actually has these sealed up, so they don't operate, but I personally went in and unsealed one of them, just to open it up, just to see the condition, it almost fell off the hinges, you can tell from that photo there. Lot of failed insulated glass units, it's like a large, large manufacturer window from like the nineteen nineties is my best guess. But obviously, it's in need of repair, as well as the exterior casings and boards on the dormer. So the proposal before you was to change, do a design change for the eight-light swing-out casements to four-over-four double hungs. And that design change would change the look slightly to add a meeting rail that has an inch and three-eighths sightline in the middle. Just to give you a little thought process on why this happened after discussions with the client and the builder, is currently, the reason why they're sealed up is because they all swing out onto the street, and you can almost tell from the exterior of the dormer that the interior, if you're standing on the inside, yeah, that's a good photo, that previous one, Nick, is, it's only about eight inches off the ground, so if you open all those casement windows currently, you can walk right out and drop down to that brick patio and get really hurt, and it's almost right at the floor level, it's only a few inches up. So that's the reason why the current owner doesn't use them and has them kind of sealed up, and they're in bad condition. So just the thought process for the design change was that, is kind of a safety thing, and I know it's, um, it's not necessarily something that I bring up here, but I feel like I, I would bring it up just as a what, what the thought process was on changing the design. And then looking back on Branch Street, I looked at a lot of the doghouse dormers, the shed dormers, and everything surrounding it on the Chestnut Street side, not on the Branch Street side or the other side of the street, they're all double-hung windows, either two-over-two, six-over-sixes, or four-over-fours. So the, the proposal is to replace the rotten wood, four-over-fours, mahogany, true divided light, double-hung, using clear glass, a thinner mutton that's there now, thirteen-sixteenths, just slightly thinner than that, and that would match the windows at the front and the below windows that I don't think are visible from Branch Street, just to be consistent. And then the other thing would be to get rid of that color that exists there now, that greenish-yellow type color, and then to match it with a Ben Moore Chelsea gray semi-gloss, which is already exists on the trim and all the windows at the back facade. Yes, and I believe that is the proposal.
Very good, thank you, Sean, and actually, that, I appreciate the explanation there about the motivation, because, we'll probably get into this, but I actually think these are, notwithstanding their terrible condition, a rather elegant design that harmonizes quite nicely with the sort of French windows on the lower floors. So I was gonna ask why you were changing them from casements, and so certainly now, understanding that there's clearly a safety issue is, is very helpful. Okay, so to sum up, they're not especially old or historic, they're in pretty tough shape. And the intention is to ostensibly replicate what's there, but converting them to two-over-two double-hung, so it is gonna change the appearance somewhat with the addition of the meeting rail in the middle, there, there we go, very good, okay. And then, oh, just one other clarifying question, there's, like, maybe you're even showing it right here, but there seems like there's some nice molding around the sort of the whole thing that you can see in the photograph, and are you gonna retain that as well, or replace it in kind?
Correct, so usually what I do for any exterior moldings, there's a few, there's not too many, it's not super ornate, but there is, right, so there's one at the header there.
Yeah.
And there's some boxes that are all boxed out, just like a, kind of a basic, like inset on all the posts, so that's to be replicated in kind, and then I can actually get access to that, and I get a knife at Atlantic Carbine, not to sales them, but just take a, a piece of that molding, and I have knives made for my shaper to replicate all of those insets and the molding, so the whole exterior facade will be the same, it's just the color that we wanted to change on.
Right, okay, thank you, yeah, because that, that, it's quite handsome, I think, and those, those details, you really, you can see them even from the street, so I appreciate that you wanna retain that. Any other clarifying questions as to what's proposed, Commissioners, before we take public comment? And it's just this, right, Sean, it's just this replacement of the windows in the dormer, nothing else on this property?
No, all the other ones were teak doors that we did many, many years ago, twenty-five years ago, that are all done and painted in that color on the exterior.
Oh, sorry, yeah, so that's just, just to be clear, since we're looking at it right here, the idea would be to match the color you see on the floor below.
That is correct, the exact same color.
Okay, very good, Commissioners, any other questions before we take public comment? Okay, let's go ahead and do that, if you want to be heard on the record, raise your hand, using the button on your Zoom, Nick will unmute you.
Okay, first up is Rochelle, Rochelle, go ahead.
Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose this application as proposed, end of comment.
Okay. And not hearing any other public comment marks, we can turn it back to you.
Okay, uh, yeah, my, my only concern with this was that I just quite like these windows, they're unexpectedly charming, I think, but now that I understand this, this safety issue that's motivating wanting to replace casements, I think I'm, I'm less inclined to insist that they remain casements, let me ask you though, Sean, I, I, it sounds like you're already sensitive to this, that, that, that there is gonna be a, a change in, in, in the visual impact of this, silly question maybe, but I'll just ask it anyway, is there anything you can do to mitigate that, so it looks more like what you've got now?
Right, so, you know, we, we create very thin meeting rails, I mean, our objective when we do all Beacon Hill windows or a lot of other older neighborhoods is to maintain a thin as possible and keep, still keeping a true divided light, so given that center mutton currently, I think it's seven-eighths or fifteen-sixteenths, we would widen it to an inch and three-eighths. I could, I have done projects in Beacon Hill where I have minimized that to an inch and an eighth at Nick's behest, actually, to try to match like more of a north slope sort of eighteen forties, like really old window, because the general rule of thumb is the older you get, the thinner it gets, and the thinner the meeting rails get, so I could definitely, I could work that.
I appreciate that, okay, so, yeah, that might, Commissioners, that's just one man's view, but that might be a direction we could pursue, any other thoughts about this?
Yes.
Please go ahead, Mo.
What is this? You're talking about each of those five windows is an individual casement?
Correct, and it swings out, Mr. Feingold.
I understand with that, but what is the, what are the dimensions of each of those windows?
Um, they are
roughly.
Height is seventy-two and a half inches, and each width is thirty-five and three-quarters.
Well.
Yeah, the scales.
You can't make a case, you make a casement that wide and tall, I know they're gonna be that tall, thirty, three feet by six feet, is that right?
Yeah, six feet tall, but, yeah, no, that's right, so the proposal, I mean, so the casement, I don't know, so I'm guessing a little here, but like in the nineteen sixties, you know, I don't know how much there was a concern about safety or anything like this, but, you know, we could, you can make a casement that size, I have, I mean, they're big, but you can make a casement that size, the proposal was mainly to make it a double-hung window, it's for the safety issue.
No, I understand that, well, I'm getting around to the safety issue, which is a real problem. There are many situations where there are casements or, or even double-hung windows, such as in hotels, which have stops in them, you can't open the window, say, more than four inches. Why wouldn't, I mean, I, I'm with the, I'm with the chairman on this, I was, there's a radical change in what in the appearance and the verticality of all these windows together, and those images look good. I, this, this is, this is, no matter, no matter how much you talk about how, how, how skinny the, the meeting rail is, where the two halves of the double-hung window will come together, it, it's gonna be radically different, or radically different, it's different. And the, the expression in this particular image is, is very strong. So.
Understood.
Wouldn't you, why wouldn't you make each of the casements, you know, a pair of case, a pair of windows in each of those openings, you get a, you can have a, your meeting rail then is vertical, not horizontal.
Meaning, like, do a set of casements, like, eight or four-by-four lights swing out, like a set in each one of those?
No, no, you have two.
It's referring to the lower level, like the lower level.
Oh, okay. Right, so that, that would change, are you talking about changing the designs of the middle post there as well? Or just do two slim, lower-over-four swing outs?
Yes, they look like that, only, only the, the vertical rail would be skinnier, I mean, I've done that with, you know, double, I know, you know, so anyway, I was just, I, I just making the argument, sir, that the, the presentation of this elevation, even though it was a backstreet, no fun, is, is quite handsome, and you're proposing quite a change. I just wanted to point that out, I, I don't
Absolutely.
Like, I don't particularly like the change of double-hung, I, I don't even like double-hung windows, I know they're all over the place, but the, the the, the casement is elegant. And the dimensions of this, of these windows are also elegant, and just wanted to press that on my, on my comrades here.
Yeah, Mo, so, so just to be clear, Sean, I think what Commissioner Feingold is suggesting is I think you asked a moment ago, so each set, each, what is now each individual casement window will become two casement windows that are, instead of being eight lights are one by four, right? Right?
Yes.
So, so Mo, that it would be effectively like the windows below, um, and, but you would again, I think. Mo, the intention would be to try to keep the meeting rail that would now be in the middle, in the center vertical, as thin as possible, yes?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Okay, uh.
So that would get is that as, if you look at the below, um, sets of French doors that we did. That would, I would need that kind of, um, width to connect those in the middle. Right, if you were to make each one of those a four light on each side of those openings to swing out. I would need, uh, like a chubby or center on both sides to make them come together correctly. Almost to mimic the lower ones.
Okay, uh.
Mo, as much as I like your idea, I think what the gentleman says is true. Uh, there'll be much greater emphasis on the, uh, middle, uh. Molyun as there is in the, uh, door swing, in the example below. Uh, which is not present currently, the double hung gives you the scale that is, is. Existent rather than, uh, a dramatically different rhythm.
Sean, the, uh, I mean, there's, there's one possibility that we haven't mentioned. Which would in effect, address both the safety issue and the architectural issue. Which of course would be to just have fixed sash that don't open at all. Um, I, I only ask because it sounds like they've been kind of frozen in place for some time.
Yes.
Uh, I, I know that this would be, obviously, your client would need to.
Sign off on it.
Yeah, do you, do you have any sense of whether they would entertain that possibility?
So it's interesting you say that cuz it actually came up in a meeting about making some of them fixed. Because they don't really need them all to operate, right? So, I, o- obviously, I have a client and, 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 and. That I would need to run that by, but that's an interesting proposal, just doing four, or sorry, five, eight light set pieces. You could keep the existing design, but again, having no operational windows at the back of that south facing. Branch Street would be something I would want the owner to comment on, cuz then they wouldn't be able to get any, you know, fresh air at all. Um, on that side, so.
Right. I mean, for what it's worth, I suppose, it's, it sounds like, you know, you could perhaps. Have one of them operate or, or, you know, the ones on either side, either end or something, and then try to mitigate the safety issue from inside somehow. I don't wanna presume, it's not our purview to get involved in the interior design, but, but, uh.
But there's, there's stops on them, you're on the right track, sir.
Yeah, uh, well, okay, um, so let me ask, since we gotta make some kind of determination here. Commissioners, uh, what are your, tell me your, your succinctly to Ariens earlier point about being. I mean, I forget the word she used, but, uh, definitive or whatever, um, are, are we just not wanting to entertain the conversion? To the switch to, to double hung, uh, windows here?
None of the windows are, are, um, a part of the original building, right? The whole window system on the backside looks as if it, it's a renovated building.
Yeah. That's, that's right, and these windows, and just to be even more precise, Ralph, yeah, the, the dormers, the, in the windows in question, we think are. Sixties at the, at the oldest and nineties maybe.
So, uh, I think the owner, uh, letting the owner tell us whether or not they want air. Or, um, fixed, uh, would be first priority. Um, and, um, um, there's no, to my mind, there's no authenticity that. We have to be slavish to because none of the windows are authentic.
Yeah, they're right, they're not historic windows, uh, they're obviously, uh, in, in two, probably tough shape to, to salvage them anyway. They don't work, um, so I think the question, just to, to put it directly, Ralph, though, is, yes, I think we, we, we'd like to know if they would entertain something. That would preserve the architecture as it is. Inoperable sashes and so forth, or just one operable one or whatever, but, uh, we should only explore that if we're gonna insist. Uh, that we don't want the double hung, because if we're okay with the double hung, then we can just approve that today and. And, and be done with it, but, so, so what's your feeling, your specific feeling about?
I'm okay with the double hung.
You are, okay.
There's a whole community around, uh, that has a, uh, dormers with double hung windows.
I am not, I am not okay with the double hung window, I, I really, I would really like to press. This idea with, that's been under discussion and ask the applicant to, to review that and come back with an alternative proposal. Having, uh, like, you know, the three, three middle ones be fixed and the two, the two end ones. Uh, be operable, they don't have, uh, 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 as a big piece with the, with the stop on it and you get fresh air. Uh, and you get safety and you maintain the verticality of the expression, which, yes. There are many double hung windows, but this is, you, I think, a unique this way. And, and I thought we were searching in all these things to find the uniqueness among the, uh, among evils. So to speak, or whatever.
Mo, it's really well done. Whether or not the windows work, uh, mechanically, it's a handsome looking dormer.
Yeah, the, the proportions are kind of wonderful, I had no idea they were as large as they are, cuz it, it doesn't belie the, uh. The scale of the thing, cuz it's so elegant, so I, I, again, I, I do quite like it. Well, that does sound like a bit of a direction, it sounds like Commissioner Feingold's feelings are rather emphatic, not to speak for him. But does anyone else have a, have a view one way or the other, so we can come to a motion here, it sounds like we might be going back to the drawing board, but. Anyone else wanna be heard? Okay, uh, let's see, so, and, and, and Sean, I think maybe, uh, that's where we're, we're winding up, um. Maybe not what quite you were hoping for, but it's.
No, it's, it's fine, it's a design change, like I totally understand, when we redid the front, um, years ago, the front facade, which I don't think has been. Changed at all, um, it was all double hung windows. But the back is obviously maybe a different elevation, um, it's a different look entirely, so. The, uh, like the major motivation was, I basically just got on Branch Street and looked at all the dormers down Branch, up and down. And, um, they were double hungs there, so I figured, and with the safety issue, I just figured I'd propose that. On the other side of Branch Street, there is, um, casements that we actually have done. Um, at fifty-five Beacon, or otherwise known as twenty-nine Branch, but, um, I don't know, you are the experts, but. Architecturally, it's a totally different kind of building, it's like a carriage house and.
Yeah, right, right, another one, uh.
John, is there a center pivoting sort of, uh?
Right there, yeah, so we did those casements to match, um, what was there originally, um, a long time ago. But, I mean, you tell me you're the experts, um, that seems like a, a totally different kind of, um, situation architecturally, right?
Yeah, oh yeah, I, for sure, um, okay, Sean, actually, Commissioner Feingold, one last question, uh, since I think it sounds like we're moving. Toward a denial without prejudice to explore this, this, uh, uh, the, these other options, um. You know, a third way, again, just in the hopes of trying to give as much information as possible to, to Sean and Rob. So they can come back, uh, with something, uh, that we're gonna be more comfortable with, what about, uh, so a third way might be. The, the middle three are fixed, inoperable, the outer two are double hung.
No.
No.
No, okay, neither, okay, good, no, that's exactly what I'm, so, so this is helpful, this is helpful, I, I put up the straw man. To try to, to get exactly this kind of feedback, so we want to maintain, Sean, this harmony.
Right, and the sideline across and you like, the, the way they look as you look up, they're delicate with all those.
Exactly.
Set up a meeting rail is, is offensive.
Delicate is a great word, yeah, okay, so, uh, why don't we do this? Uh, I will move that the application be denied without prejudice, uh, and the applicant, uh, requested. Uh, to, uh, return with alternatives that preserve, uh, the. Uh, general configuration, which is to say the, the, uh, uh, of the existing windows, they don't have to be casements necessarily, but, uh, say it again, Mo.
That, you preserve the verticality of the.
Yeah.
I, I think that's the word you were looking for.
Yeah, uh, and, uh, so Sean, is that enough, and Rob, is that enough to go on?
Yeah, perfect, yeah, we go back to the client and, um, propose, uh, possible options.
Great, okay, uh, do I hear a second to the motion? Okay, we will vote, Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Feingold.
Hi.
Commissioner Jackson.
Hi.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, okay, so the motion is approved to deny without prejudice, uh, you'll get a letter from Nick, uh, just affirming or confirming, uh, our determination. And, uh, we look forward to seeing, uh, a revised proposal when you've been able to confirm with your client, thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I think next is one forty-five Pinkney. Uh, let's see. Hi there, is this, uh?
Megan Morgan.
Oh, Megan.
Yeah, how are you?
Hi, welcome, thanks for coming in, uh, do you have anyone else with you presenting?
Just me.
Okay, you wanna just give us a quick summary of what you're proposing?
Yes, we have a client who wants air conditioning, uh, that's really the sum of it, and so we need to place a condenser. So obviously, the first place we went to, uh, was the roof. And, uh, having fully vetted that possibility with management, uh, there was no feasible way to get it on the roof. In terms, there's all sorts of bylaws that prevented that from happening. So now we are seeking permission to place a condenser on a balcony. And we thought, of course, that the historical commission would want to conceal this, so we built, uh, an enclosure. To conceal this, and what you're seeing in these photographs are images of that enclosure around. A mockup, which is the bottom right photo, uh, that's the mockup of the actual equipment. The height it would be at on its, uh, vibration isolators, so that's the exact size of the equipment footprint, um. And, uh, having met with Civic, they wanted to see images of actually what it would look like without the enclosure. So I did take the enclosure down, and I do have those photos to share if it's of interest.
Yes, please.
Okay, um, let me, uh, share my screen here, um, I need you to.
I have to make you co-host, Megan, hang on one second.
No worries, and I'm gonna pull these up.
All right, whenever you're ready.
Okay, um, oops, let me second here, sorry. Okay, here we are. Okay, so that is, uh, zooming, so from the street, zooming in as close as I can get. You can barely see the, the shadow of the box that is a condenser, this is on the sixth floor. Um, so that's getting as close as you can get to it, and let me scroll through these, that's from directly below. And again, it's the balcony second down from the top, the top being the seventh floor, the next one down being the sixth floor. Um, so no visibility when you're right underneath it, obviously. Uh, uh, it's going into someone else's photos, here we go, and, uh, then shooting from. Further up, uh, walking down, uh, walking up Revere, sorry, towards Charles Street, looking back. Uh, this is actually heading up Revere, past Charles Street, um, that's, you can see the top of that, um. You can see the top of that, um, condenser mockup there.
Okay, that's quite helpful, thank you. Um, okay, commissioners, any, uh, clarifying questions before we take public comment in this? Putting the condenser on the balcony, we've seen this before in this building multiple times, so we're, we kinda know the drill, uh. Okay, hearing none, uh, why don't we take public comment? Oh, sorry, Mo, do you wanna weigh in?
Yes.
Question?
Understand the enclosure, is it just at the railing height?
So, uh, I'll stop sharing, we can go back to the presentation. Um, the proposed Millwork enclosure is at the railing height and it is painted the same color as the railing. The best image is probably the one that's entitled close up, it's top right. Again, the point being to create some sort of shroud to make sure that the condenser isn't visible from any vantage. But again, uh, Rochelle and, and others thought it actually might be. Less obtrusive to just get rid of the enclosure altogether.
Yeah, I think, uh, I might be inclined to agree.
What have the others done? You say that, uh, there's a, this is a common event.
If you look down on the floors below, you can see on the bottom floor, there's a condenser.
Oh, yeah, oh, I see, oh.
Yeah, I don't believe they've typically used enclosures, is that right, Nick, in this building? Cuz these are these kind of low profile units to begin with, but.
We've, we've approved this once before, um, and we did not approve an enclosure, it was just, um. It was enclosed, I think it was in the, cuz very similar location.
Yeah, that, right, this is a high floor, so it's only, uh, visible through the balcony railing. Uh, at some remove, obviously, distantly, there's even trees, it looks like from one angle at least. Um, so I think our, our, our pretty firm, uh, conclusion when this has come up before is, you know, you really have to. Know exactly what to look for and what you're looking at to even notice it, I think it's, it's pretty minimal in terms of its visual impact and maybe. Uh, less, less size, the better, um, the distinction, I think, between the. Proposed enclosure and the thing itself from that distance is probably.
Using your words, sir, is de minimis would be.
Yeah. I, I, I believe so.
Too bad, all those balconies, nobody, can people still use them or they sit next to an air, air handler?
I think their primary function was as a fire escape, actually, there's no doors that go out onto them.
That's right, there were no doors, that's right.
Oh, right, right, wow.
They've been in those units, that's correct, there's no door out onto the balcony. And but you think that's a fire escape? That's it.
Yeah, I think that's, that's what it was, uh, deemed, because this is two units joined as one.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and take public comment, um, if you wanna be heard on the record, raise your hand in the zoom, Nick will unmute you.
All right, first up is Rochelle, Rochelle, go ahead.
Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose this application as proposed, as the unit is not visible from a public way. And satisfies guideline A nine, end of comment.
Okay, um, and that is it, I don't see any other public comment mark.
Okay, so just continuing the, the prior point, uh, this has come up before, similar circumstances, same building. Similar if not identical, uh, piece of equipment in a similar if not identical location. Uh, we found them, it to be really de minimis in its visibility and visual impact, more importantly. Uh, and so we have approved them, or it, or them before. Um, I'm inclined to do the same here, and I think I, I would agree, uh, with Rochelle from the Civic Association that, uh. Better just leave the enclosure off, it's simpler, cheaper, and I don't think it would have much of any visual impact, uh, might even be negative. Um, to add the enclosure, because you can see the enclosure through that balcony railing, this is a nice, uh. Example, right here, in the, in the third from the left on the top, it kind of draws attention to itself, and we, we really want us for it to go away.
That's fine with us, okay.
Yeah, uh, so I, I think it, it, it ought to be fine as is without the enclosure.
Okay.
What about Rochelle, who says that it's not in a public way, they don't have, you can't see it from a public ways. Then on the jurisdiction, why do we have jurisdiction?
Well, I think, uh, Nick, what, what's your, uh, you know, there's a. Um, there's a photo in the, on the bottom row of what we're looking at now. Yeah, that shows it's through a tree, I mean, it's, it's probably, again, if you, if there's a spot where you can see the balcony. And so in principle, you might actually be able to see a corner of the machine technically, so technically, it's a jurisdiction.
Yeah, especially with the proposed enclosure too, so yeah, that, that's my assessment, but I know Rochelle goes, uh, to leaps and bounds. To find visibility, so I do certainly trust her, so, but, uh, erring, erring on the side of caution in case this hap, uh, this. Uh, is proposed again, uh, we set a good precedent, so.
Yeah.
In other words, it, it's, it's, so, it's, 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 it's high up. Uh, it's behind a rail, and you might actually mistake it for a deck chair.
Yeah, exactly, that's right, or, or not be able to tell the difference between, right, any just ordinary garden variety stuff that's up there.
Okay, I, I rest, I'm sorry.
No, that's a good question, um, okay, um. Okay, so I guess unless there's further discussion, I will move that the application be approved or submitted with the proviso, uh, that the enclosure not be included.
So moved, second that.
Okay, we will vote, Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Feingold.
Hi.
Commissioner Jackson.
Hi.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, so the application is approved, Megan, uh, you'll get a letter from Nick, uh, confirming our determination. If you have any questions, just follow up with him directly, thanks.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
You too. Thanks.
Thank you, Megan.
Okay, next is 24 Brimmer. Uh, Bridget. I believe.
Hello. Hi, Mark. How are you? And hello, commissioners. And, um, uh, the owners are here as well, Hal, Carol, and Amy Ryan. And.
Hello, Helen, Amy. Thanks for coming in.
So you can unmute them when you, when you want to. So this, our, our application is to replace the existing, uh, wrought iron pickets in the front of the house with cast iron to match the, um, the adjacent uh, railings. So this is a a, a case of the original railings having been, you know, removed at some point. They obviously were the same because the stone, the existing stone curb and the, the sides match what, um, what is on the adjacent houses. So the one, um, so in this, uh, the, uh, sorry, we can go back to that one, Nick. The the one that shows the side view. So there is an existing iron fence on the, um, neighbor's side. And, uh, no railing at all on the sloped side of the stairs. So that section is new. But as you see, it matches what is there on the, on the neighbor's side. Um, on the other side, we're, uh, replacing the, the picket fence that is there with, uh, matching cast iron railing. And we are doing one more thing. As, as you can see in this, uh, in this drawing, the the, at the very top of the railing, there's uh, there's quite a stretch from the top of the railing to the door itself. And in order to make the passage down the stairs safer, you'll see in the plan that we're adding, okay, this is great. We're adding a small section of matching cast iron railing at the very top so that um, people using the stairs can get out of the door safely, have something to hold on to uh, that leads them to the rest of the railing, but is in the same spirit uh, as, as the railing. And we're just doing it on one side because um, the habit is to use, is to use that side of the stairs. Um, in addition, you'll see, so this, the, the lower railing, both, all the railing that we're looking at in this picture is new. And the, uh, again, matching the other houses adjacent and as the other houses also have, it has an operable gate in, in where, where that dash line shows. And the, the gate is designed so that it doesn't hardly seems to interrupt the railing itself. So it's, it's not a, not a very visible moment. The existing stone curb is there. The existing stone is alongside both sides of the stair. Uh, so none of that will change. And, um, Nick, if you could show the photographs. Uh, yeah, okay. So there you see on, on the left side, the existing cast iron railing uh, at the level section, the absence of the railing going up the left side of the stairs. On the right side of the stair, it's, it's a, a wooden, uh, it's essentially a two by four just so that it's marginally safe to get down the stairs. And the rest of the railing on the right side is a, a very low wrought iron uh, picket fence that goes around to meet the railing of the Advent Church. And, uh, that will be replaced to match the, uh, the railing on the left. The, um, uh, we are still searching for a, a, a readily available, uh, cast iron baluster that matches. Haven't found it yet, but we're working with Peter Andrew Chow of Woven Steel, and he has said that he can help us find it. But our, our commitment is to match what's there. Um, is that, are there other pictures? Nick, I can't remember. Yeah, so thi- this shows details of, um, on the, on the upper left, you see the railings that exist on the adjacent houses. At the upper, in the middle, you see the gate. And you see how it's done to, to pivot, uh, and not, not interrupt, you know, not interrupt the railing visually. The upper right is the handrail that exists. Uh, and on the bottom row, there's the, uh, the fence on the, um, on the left corner compared to the fence on the right corner. Under, under the, the plants, there is the, uh, there seems to be the original stone curb, which looks like it might be made of, I don't know, brownstone, or I'm not quite sure what stone it is, but it's it, it is, um, probably needs to be adjusted a bit. Um, on the sides of the, um, of the stair, we are going to put the new balusters where they would fit in the existing holes that are already in the stair. And that is the way we're going to make Brimmer Street a little more beautiful. Or I should say, to Carol and suffer.
Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
I, I have just two quick clarifying questions. Um, oh, and Nick has just read my mind here. So.
Yeah.
Um, uh, so, uh, the, the motivation for the design of the replacement railing is, uh, you're matching next door, but it's not just next door. It's like four houses in a row that have a pretty consistent, if not identical treatment. Is that correct? Yes.
I couldn't have said it better.
Yeah. And, and as you can see from this nice, uh, view, these clearly, these houses were built and designed at the same time. They, they are matching. Uh, and remarkably still so in a lot of respects. Uh, so, uh, that, uh, so I, I'll just have to ask the uh, the obvious question just procedurally, uh, you don't have direct evidence that that pattern was extant on this building at some point in its life? You're just, uh, assuming not unreasonably that the others are identical and so it likely would have been?
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Um, and, uh, let's see, so I think that's all I had. And oh, and, and what's there? I mean, I think commissioners, if you, it, it, it's sort of visible in this, but it is a otherwise pretty unremarkable, simple uh, picket fence. Uh, you, you don't, let me, again, I'll just ask you directly, uh, as far as you know, that's not some kind of original feature for this house or, or otherwise ancient?
The, the railing on the, on the right? I'm sorry.
Yes. Right, right. Uh, it's pretty sort of utilitarian on the steps and then just very simple low pickets on the bottom uh, around the garden, right? Okay.
And, and you can, you can see on the, on the stone, on the, on the right side of the stairs are exactly the same holes that exist on the left side that correspond with
Right.
the way the cast iron railing balusters would have been installed.
Right. Yes, clearly there would have been a railing. I think it's a very safe assumption, uh, on the steps, right? Okay. Um, commissioners, any other clarifying questions on, uh, what's proposed?
I'm good. No.
Rochelle, you're going to add additional rail on both sides of the, uh, upper part of the stair, right?
We are only adding that additional piece on the right.
Uh, why is that only on the right?
I, I think because it's not original, um, and we wanted to keep quiet about things that, um, were additions, but we take your guidance on that.
I don't know. Uh, I don't know how old your community is, but, um, forcing them to always go to the left when, when leaving in order to get a rail, um, is I would suggest that this is a case in which there should be one on the right as well as the left. You'd, uh, uh, I'm assuming you're dealing with a population that if they do not have balance issues, they will have balance.
Well, I, if you, if you go back to the photograph, you'll see that, uh, the owners use the side for, um, potted plants, so they never go down. And, and in reality, the, uh, the rails are far enough apart that you would never use them together. They're too far apart. You would always go to one side or the other. And the way the doors are hinged, it's the door on the right that you use.
I, you're, you're the voice of a younger person.
Excuse me.
Do you want to say something?
Hey, Ralph.
Yeah.
Uh, I have a quest- uh, question. What are you showing? You show a drawing which has railings on both sides, but now you're talking about not having them.
The top rail.
Just that very top piece.
The tops.
Wait, wait, one, excuse me. Wha- what, what is the propos- it is a drawing, shows just that. Oh, I see, just that.
It's only on that side.
And that, that single, that singular piece.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think, uh, my assumption is that um, if she's dealing with a population that uh, covers a wide age range, um, to cause them to have to favor one side.
No, I'm, excuse me, I agree, I agree, Ralph. It should be both sides. For example, it, it, as a, there's a several examples along Charles Street in which access, uh, for example, to the new bookstore. I mean, that is almost an impossible stair to climb and, uh, uh, I think that it lacks sufficient rails, if I recall, because I'm always wobbling myself. I mean, I'm, I'm of an age where I need railings.
Yes.
Alf, I took you on that. I'm older than you.
Not by much.
I may not be wiser, but I'm older. The and I, I think, uh, I mean, for, for this amount of metalwork that's being proposed.
Yeah.
Huh? The amount of metalwork that's being proposed to add one symmetrically on the left and I usually don't talk about symmetry as being a greater thing, but it is, it is here that, that
We should.
That you, you should propose one for the left side as well. You have an action?
They should, they should go up.
Hmm?
Should go up on both sides. Yeah.
Well, let me just ask you, just to clarify that, uh, so apart from the accessibility question, which is starting to get kind of outside of our purview, but, uh, are, are you saying, am I hearing you correctly, that you, you also believe there ought to be one on both sides, just from an architectural perspective, that it's, uh, symmetrical?
What do we, what do the other houses look like? Do we have?
They don't have.
They don't have it. None of the other houses has it. And that was, that's one reason that we thought to just do one because it is an anomaly in the street.
Uh, I, they're going to get old also.
Well, uh, you know, for what it's worth, there is, uh, an example of this kind of treatment. Um, and maybe Nick can just show us, uh, it, it doesn't, it's not the same style, but one Lewisburg Square, uh, which you all may know right on the corner. It's a twin building, so it's in a row of buildings, again, that would have been built uh, contemporaneously and so forth. Uh, and it has this feature of a railing that extends past the steps and wraps the, the column. And as you can see, it is on both sides. And in fact, if you, if you go down the block a little bit further on that same street, you'll see there are a couple of railings that go from the street into the, uh, uh, into the, 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 the entry there. And they likewise are, 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 there's one that isn't symmetrical and the one that is, but, uh, yeah, I mean, um, I think, uh, I, I'm certainly okay with, uh, adding a second one if we think particularly for architectural purposes, uh, it's, uh, recommends itself.
Yes.
Uh, you say that's fine with me. How about you, Hal and Amy?
You ju- you just talked about, but I, I thought the railing was going to go up to both sides anyway.
It is going up both sides. There's, there's that extra piece at the very top.
To grab.
Yeah.
Yes. I don't care. No, no one will ever gra- no one will ever grab it because of the way the doors open, but I don't care for symmetry somewhere.
Okay, all right. So we can add that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Um.
Hard to.
Yeah. Uh, let's see. I think we still need to take public comment if we don't have any further questions about what's proposed. Let's go ahead and do that. If you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand in the Zoom, using the button at the bottom of Zoom panel, and Nick will unmute you.
Is Rochelle. Rochelle, go ahead.
Being House Civic Association, we do not oppose this application as proposed. The historically documented and current railing of the adjacent sister buildings at 22 and 20 Brimmer Street and others nearby, the physical evidence of filled holes in the stringer, as well as pictorial information, all substantiate the restoration as replacement of missing architectural features to meet guideline A three. Also, guideline F theory for trim, including handrail, states that if any element is known to be missing, its replacement is strongly encouraged with appropriate documentation. End of comment.
And Rochelle, since we've got you, uh, um, again, since we just, uh, 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 made a revision on the fly here, uh, does, do your comments still hold with respect to, uh, matching the railing on the other side?
Um, I'm gonna provide a comment for that because the committee hasn't provided a comment on it.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, anyone else want to be heard? Public comment? Okay.
Public comment, Mark. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Uh, so I think, um, let's see, we haven't heard from, from Arian on this, but Arian, do you have a view on, are you okay with having it matched on both sides? Assuming you're okay with it in general?
Well, it makes the most sense for, for it to be matched on both sides. So I was very glad that Mo stepped up. Mo and, and Ralph stepped up and it seems as though the owners are on board as well, so I'm definitely for it.
Okay, and, uh, so just to quickly recap, um, there's not a historic fence there. There's a replacement that's clearly a modern of some vintage and, uh, otherwise unremarkable, at least in my opinion. You can see a nice contrast here, what they're proposing to replicate. They don't have a definitive evidence that this pattern existed on their property, but it still exists on the house next door and then one next door to that and the one next door to that. They're clearly identical buildings built at the same time. So I think I'm, I'm more than satisfied that uh, that's the obvious place you would start, uh, in terms of, uh, restoring, uh, uh, historically and architecturally appropriate railing for this entrance. And, uh, I think it's not on the start, place you'd start, it's probably where you'd end. Um, so I, all that to say, I'm, I'm fine with it as proposed and revised to include uh, uh, an identical railing on the, the new top portion on the other side. Uh, any other views? It sounds like we have a consensus, but I don't want to jump the gun too quickly here. Anyone else? Uh, okay. In that case, I will make a, a move that the application be approved as submitted with the proviso that the new extension to the railing uh, that continues uh, into, uh, the entryway uh, be replicated on both sides, uh, identically on both sides.
I'm checking that motion.
Okay, we will vote, uh, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Feingold.
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Uh, motion is approved. Thank you very much, Bridget and, uh, Amy and Hal.
Commissioners.
Thank you.
You got a letter from Nick with the details?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Bye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, this is, uh, me again.
Very good. Uh, hello again. You want to just tell us, uh, what you've got in mind here?
Yeah, hi. Um, and I also have Dewey a lot. The owner is here. And, uh, he, if you can unmute him so that he can say anything he feels like saying. Um, here, what, what we're applying for is a new garden gate at the back of 160 Mount Vernon Street. So this is on Lime Street. And, um, the existing gate is, um, pretty impractical. It, it requires essentially plowing half the street to get it open in the winter. And it is, uh, low and small. What we're proposing is, uh, a gate that is, uh, upward acting. It does, as you see in these drawings, have a, um, a door for a person. But it, it, it doesn't fold. It, it's, it slides up to a horizontal position. So it, um, doesn't hang out over the, um, over the sidewalk. It doesn't hit people walking down the sidewalk. And it, uh, is, uh, the exterior of it is, uh, our own material, custom material. It has the one thing that, that we can't change. It has the one thing that, that we can't change is the locking mechanism. But it will fit well with the, you know, gates on that little stretch of Lime Street. Our detailing is different from the, on one side, it's a brick wall. And on the other side, it is a similar garden gate. But we are detailing it differently and making it as, as quiet. The details are, are related to the way it is now. To make the, the gate workable, required making it a little bit higher. But we've kept it as low as we can and the awats are, you know, in agreement that they don't have to have anything outsized there. They have a normal sized car. One of the, one of the things that this allows is that it remains as a gate, as a fence essentially. It doesn't require, I know sometimes there's a superstructure of metal struts that can be used with a more conventional garage door. This has none of that. The only time that it will project in a lateral way is when it's open. Otherwise, it will be like a gate. I think the plan shows the relationship to the existing curb cut. We're not proposing to change that. And we, I think the, the brick there requires a bit of resetting because it's, it's gotten kind of lumpy over time. But we have tried to minimize the amount of space taken up by the, by the machinery. And we made it as close to a simple 19th century fence as we can. Do Nick, are there photographs here? So there you can see it, it's extremely low at this point. And kind of a mess. So, but you can, yes, go ahead.
But, no, go ahead, I'm just going to ask your, it will be sort of more in harmonious and kind of every respect to the one we can see just to the right in that it will be a similar architectural treatment, but also importantly, ostensibly the same height when you're done.
Yes, yes. And, and, but it will not, it will not appear to be continuous with that. It'll maintain its own architectural character. So it won't, it won't turn into a giant double thing.
Right, right.
And the detailing that you see on the existing surround is the same as what we will use.
I'm puzzled.
Right. I like puzzles.
The art thought, is this appropriate?
Yes, please, go ahead.
In this drawing, we're looking at the arch gateway on the left side is to remain?
It belongs to a separate property.
Oh, it does, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, so.
No, this is, it's an unusually narrow lot. This is just a, you know, basically a 16 foot wide house.
But you, you do show the out to out dimension of 15, 7. And of course, the door is less than that because those piers are thick, take up some dimensions. So the door is 14 something wide, right?
Yes, yeah.
And the whole thing tilts up, right?
It tilts up, yes, in a single plane.
Including that, that gateway door is, would be part of the tilt up. So the whole.
The one, yeah.
So go back to your original drawing, please, that's the essence of my question. Yeah, the left hand drawing, this, they call the second proposed. You, you mentioned that it would not interfere with pedestrians or, or, or hang out over the sidewalk. But it does both, because you don't show the arc of the door. And if you drew the arc of the door, I believe, you would so that it would swipe anybody who's walking there and the door opens up, they'd be tossed into the. They'd be.
We have, I, we have a diagram of that, which, I mean, I saw this demonstrated. And the door, when it opens, it slides, it slides back before it goes up. So it really, it's, it's not like a simple pivot.
Oh my goodness, okay.
It's, it's quite impressive and if.
All right, the, the whole question is about, I realize it may be not a purview once again. But I was, I'm an architect, I react to public safety matters. And you said it wouldn't affect people walking by it or, or overhang the sidewalk, where it looks like it overhangs the sidewalk a lot. And it, I mean.
Well, I, I, you're right, it, it overlook, it, it overhangs the sidewalk by about, I don't know what that is. Nine inches, eight inches. I don't, I don't think it's that. I don't think it's that big.
I'm sorry to interject, but I just want to remind the commission about our, our narrow area of purview, which is only aesthetics.
Yes, we, we know that. Thank you.
Okay, why don't we, so I think, yeah, I, I think we can't really get into.
But we can't approve something that's dangerous for God's sakes.
Yeah, I think that, I think I can demonstrate that this is not dangerous.
Okay, can you do that now?
I can, I, I may have a video.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that it will show, it won't show this situation. So.
But it will show the action of the door.
It will show, I think it will show the action of the door.
Yep, if you have the video handy, Bridget, I can, I can give you co-hosting abilities.
Okay, let me see, it may just, it's going to take me a moment to find it, because I think it, it may be on my phone. Nick, if I can find it, can I? Fix it to you or?
Feel free to email it to me if you'd like.
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't prepared for this, I apologize.
It's okay. Commissioners, while Bridget's looking for that, is there any other questions, comments, or concerns related to our area of purview?
You know, oh. I'm about to get angry, but I think I'll be quiet.
Thanks for the warning.
We could take public comment, Bridget, and then we'll come back to that.
I'm so sorry about this.
No, no worries, let's take public comment. If you want to be heard on the record, and we'll come back to that, Bridget, if you've got it. And it doesn't need to hold us up, frankly, because it's, but let's take public comment. If you want to be heard on the record, press the, raise your hand in your Zoom and Nick will call on you.
All right, first up we have is Rochelle, Rochelle, go ahead.
Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose this application as submitted. Replacement of the nonhistoric 1963 fence with sliding gates using new technological advances provide a more traditional appearance to satisfy Guideline A3 for new work that is of appropriate detail regards to size, shape, material, and design. Additionally, the proposal uses a product that was approved next door at 158 Mount Vernon Street. End of comment.
Thanks very much, Rochelle. Next up we have is Dewey. Hang on, Bridget, let's, do we, do we go ahead?
Yes.
Oh, hi, I, I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm the new owner of 160 Mount Vernon. And I'm very excited to be in Beacon Hill, we just moved in a month ago. And you know, the, the gate that's there right now is pretty disastrous. It's not intended to in a long time. And we, we worked really hard to make sure that this door, you know, doesn't actually affect anybody in, in the, the street area. And Bridget should be able to show you that, I've actually got a video here if you need to see it. But we, we're, we're really excited about this door, hopefully, you know, being able to satisfy all constituents. So just wanted to say that, and I'll turn it back over to Bridget, because I'm sure she has a video as well.
Oh, I'm, okay, I, I, hang on a sec, I, can I share or do I need to send it to you now?
I, I can make you co-host if you'd like to share, yeah.
Faster, yeah.
All right.
Good.
Yes. Okay, so this. Can you see this?
We can.
This is from the inside. And you can see how it slides back first. So there is an overhang at the street, but it happens fairly high when in the process.
Yeah, okay.
So that's it, you don't need to.
Go on, do that again.
Sure.
Are we looking at the interior or the exterior?
Only, only the interior.
This is the interior.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You can see how it falls back first. And it's not, it's not a simple pivot.
And Bridget, so I appreciate that your project is obviously not going to match exactly the dimensions of what we're seeing in the video. But is the door approximately the same size?
Yes.
And the, the configuration is otherwise the same where the joints are and where it's mounted to these rails and so forth? Okay, so the, so it's fair to say that the part that sticks out is about as big as what we see in the video.
Yes.
And it will do, it will stick out where it sticks out approximately like we see in the video. Okay, thank you, that's, that's quite helpful.
Okay.
I think I'm satisfied.
Stop sharing, yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm okay with this method. Did we have, okay, so no other public comment, right? Any other hands on public?
That's correct, that's correct, no other public comment.
We'll close public comment. The curb cut is not changing, the height is going to be approximately what it is next door. No higher than next door, you'll still distinguish it from next door. And then otherwise, as, as proposed, the design, I think I'm fine with it. Anyone else want to weigh in? Oh, one last question, what's on the top? I know, I just noticed that the next door one, the one next door was redone in the last few years and has a copper cap. Are you doing something similar or is it just wood?
No, it's just wood.
Okay.
It's just wood, really to distinguish the character of the two houses.
Okay, very good. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Going once, going twice. I will move that the application be approved as submitted. Nick, am I forgetting any, any necessary provisos? I don't think so.
Done, nope.
A move that it's approved as submitted.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for approval, we'll vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Feingold.
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
And Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, so the application is approved. You got a letter from Nick affirming our determination, as usual, any questions, just follow up with him. Dewey and Bridget, thank you both very much for coming in.
Thank you, thank you very much.
See ya.
Till next time.
Till next time, indeed, have a good night.
You too.
Okay, next is 250 Cambridge Street, which I believe is Andy Fitz perhaps? Anyone from 250, Andy Fitz or otherwise, for 250 Cambridge Street. Otherwise known as Chase Bank, I believe. Oh, Shane Healy, is that, is that our applicant there, Nick, do you see Shane Healy? Hand us.
Shane, I, I have both of your presentations, so just let me know if you need me to skip ahead. I know there's been some revisions to comply with the guidelines, so, so just let me know, I have both of them back to back.
Perfect, could you also unmute Anthony Landy as well?
Anthony Landy, let's see, there he is right there.
Yes, perfect. And since, could you also give me the co-sharing abilities?
Yes, please.
Awesome.
Did you want to share your screen?
Yes, if I could.
Oh, perfect, great.
All right, everybody see my screen?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, for taking the time to meet with us. This is a proposed project that is currently a TD Bank on the corner of Cambridge and Anderson Street. Exterior limits of work is just, if, if needed, making things ADA accessible. This is a view from Cambridge. View from Anderson. And the proposed work, so from Anderson, we are going to have a new security camera in the middle between the two storefront systems. We're going to have a new three by two foot sign on the existing banner sign structure. We're going to utilize the existing structure and just add a new sign to replace what was there for the TD Bank. This area here is an exterior trash enclosure. Right, right about here, there is a exterior louver that we are going to be relocating due to minimizing the smell into the Chase, into the, into the bank itself. Yes. And these two sections here are going to be new storefronts systems to mimic the existing storefronts systems, just to make them more energy efficient and more, more or less the chase standard, but mimic what's there as far as the finishes and the molyan locations will be maintained from the existing. These sections here are spandrel glazing due to the ceiling being located at the molyan here. And there'll be two interior walls right up against the storefront here and here. So we're going to screen those, so you don't just see a wall. On Cambridge Street, very similar, we're going to have a security camera in between the two storefronts. We're going to have a security camera here and a little mini alcove at the entry. Zoom in, we're going to have two low profile, they're about five inches by one inch, emergency lights in the alcove. Here we have our new blaze sign on the existing structure.
On the bracket, you mean?
Correct, yeah, correct, yes. Yeah, it'll, it'll be on this bracket right there, it's existing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And again, above the entry, there's going to be some spandrel glass, because the ceiling height is right here, this molyan. Same for here, and then this section and this section will mimic, let me go back. Will mimic these areas up here, will be, will be the new louvers that are being relocated from the trash enclosure area to help mitigate the, the smell of the trash. And then and then also these three sections of storefronts are going to be new as well to help increase the, just the, the energy efficiency. And they're also will mimic the color and finish of the existing above and to each side. Of course, we'll have some graphics on these windows and then an exterior push button to get into, to open the door for ADA accessibility as well. I believe that is all, and I know here it does say stone to be power washing clean. But I did see today that it is requested to not clean the building if, if at all possible. So we are going to get rid of that and only clean the building if it is helpful to prevent deterioration of the exterior building. Only clean the building if it is helpful to prevent deterioration of the exterior building.
Can we just talk about the, the, the blade sign? Uh, just talk about the material, please?
Yeah, uh, the blade sign material is metal.
And, and Commissioners, in case you're looking at the old presentations in the, um, in the portal, um, the illuminated signage has been. Removed from this, um, application at my request. And the signage will still exist, but it'll be inside the storefront, which we've determined to not be in our purview.
Yep, there'll be a sign right here and there'll be a sign right here on the inside.
And that's it, it, as far as the signage.
Yep, there'll be, there'll be two, two signs on the inside of the building, one there, one there, then we'll just going to replace the. Existing, uh, TD bank sign with a new sign for the, for the client, uh, on the existing, uh. Blade sign structure.
Okay, and, and, uh, just another clarifying question on that. So the old bank that was there before had awnings, so you're, you're, you remove the awnings and. You're not going to add awnings. Is that right?
That is correct, yes. I know it's the, the current pictures, they do not show awnings currently.
Um, okay. Uh, one final question, uh, sorry, that the black portions that you're showing, yes, there and there. Uh, what is that exactly? Um, I, I.
Actually, a plan would probably be easier. So tho- in those areas, one of them is here, one's here and one's here. So you got, so. If, if that was clear, you would just be seeing a, a wall. So we're going to, uh, screen that or, or film that to kind of hide. Just seeing a, a blank wall.
Oh, but it's still a window.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay, so there's, there's, because there was like frosted glass on there already, I think, right?
Exactly.
Yes.
You can't see it because you couldn't see it because the awnings were there, but it was frosted over anyway. Okay.
It'll be, it'll, it'll, it'll be in this, uh, this kind of a color here is medium gray.
Okay. Oh, I see. I, I'm sorry. I couldn't quite see the detail. The molyans and stuff are still there. That's what I was concerned about. Great.
Yes, correct.
So it's spandrel glass?
That's correct.
Oh, as, yes, there's a note right there, spandrel glazing. Very good.
Okay, well, you clarified my question too, is, it's. Spandrel glazing within the existing molyan system.
Yes.
Fine, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, and what happens in that big black square on the right hand side? On the low.
This one here?
That was a. What hap- what, what, what does that do? Is that?
That's existing, that belongs to, that's under the landlord's purview, that is the trash enclosure area and where the current. Um, supply air louvers are located. So, um. As such, as it was bringing unwanted smells into the, uh, previous tenants, we are going to close off that louver system there. And relocate it to, uh, Cambridge Street.
Okay. These two areas here.
So it's not really part of, you're not replacing that fencing and stuff that's there now. You're just moving the louver that you can see through the fence.
That's exactly right. We can't touch the, the fences. It's not our purview. It's under the landlord.
Okay, uh, Commissioners, anything else, uh, in terms of what's proposed? Questions?
So is this, I know we're not on the interior, but because there's spandrel glass. On the two outer bays and the center bay of the elevation below. The, the first floor, uh, the gla- why is that treatment different for that? Yeah.
So here versus here and here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Um, in. In this section here, right, right in here, there's going to be an interior sign above. Uh.
And maybe show them that graphic. Show them that graphic just so they have an idea, even though, yeah.
Yeah, let me, you know, me. So. On. We're going to have a, a graphic on the inside of the building right here. Uh, and if it was, if it was to mimic the, the same, it would, it would, it would hide that.
Yes.
Yep.
And Ralph, that's to, that's to get around our guidelines of not allowing illuminated signs, so it goes on the interior, which we've determined is not in our purview. Yeah.
Yeah, I like that solution. That's, that's, uh, that's nice. Uh, okay, anything else? Okay, hearing none, I will, uh, let's do a public comment. If you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand and resume using the button on your Zoom panel and Nick will unmute you.
Okay, uh, first up is Rochelle. Rochelle, go ahead.
Beacon Hill Civic Association, the public notice only states that the proposed work is new signage, so our comment. Is only about the new signage, which is the blade sign in this presentation. So her comment is, we do not oppose this application as submitted. It does not contain illumination, which satisfies guideline. I twelve and guideline I nine, which limits signage to a single sign and a single projecting sign is also satisfied. End of comment.
Thanks Rochelle, and, um, I believe that's the only public comment we have marked, so back to you.
Okay, thank you Rochelle. Okay, Commissioners, any, uh, any concerns about anything that, now that we understand, uh, the details?
Well, I. I, I, I agree with. With, uh. My fellow colleague. About the middle panel not being pa- spandrel glass. It should be the same, but you're going, it just is going to be. Not as clean and elegant. Uh, I know you want to light it sign behind there, but it's.
Well, I think the alternative is a blade sign on the, on the freeze above there, which should be even more, arguably even more.
Yeah, no, I, I, no, I understand. I, I, I just, I think it's fine. I guess it's fine.
I mean, I appreciate what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, maybe in ideal world, you'd want it to be entirely uniform.
But, but it's a bank, I like, they like to be.
Right. Uh, okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
Well. One comment about the, the, sorry, yeah, yes. I make a motion that it be approved as submitted. With the proviso that the exterior hardware, uh, be of color that's approved, reviewed and approved. You mentioned a lot of alarms and things like that, but you didn't say what color metal they are. Are they of similar color? I'm sorry, that's mucking up the motion, but.
No, we could just, you wanted to say it'll be approved by staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, the, uh, it's, the motion is to approve as submitted with the details of the hardware to be, uh. Submitted and approved by staff in advance. So do I hear a second?
I second it.
Okay, we will vote. Commissioner, are, are you okay with that, Nick? I should presume. Okay, we'll, we'll vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Feingold.
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. So the, uh, application is approved. You get a letter from Nick, uh, confirming the determination and, uh, what you need to submit to him. For final approval, uh, please follow up with him directly and, uh, you can get that done.
Awesome. Thank you very much for sharing your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is one oh one home stretch here, uh, one oh one Pinkney Street. Uh, do we have, uh, representative from one oh one Pinkney?
Present.
Um, good evening. Thank you Chair Kiefer. Um, I'm Erin Doherty with Epsilon Associates. Thank you for your time here tonight. I'm also joined by Tim Burke, the project architect and the property owners, Robyn Fiona Sony, so. Um, Nick, if you're able to unmute them, um, as well if they're not already. Um, and Nick, is it possible if I could share my screen?
Yes, absolutely. Please, Erin.
Same presentation as we submitted. I just.
Okay. Just stop.
Alright, that's up. Um, thank you again for your time. We're pleased to present this project, which has been carefully designed to fit within the. Historic character of the district and this end of Myrtle Street. Um, on that point, I also want to thank staff to the commission, Nick Armada, for his assistance as we prepared this design review application. His input was very helpful, so thank you, Nick. Um, I will briefly review the research that we completed on the property as we developed the applications and share some photos of existing conditions. And I'll pass it over to Tim, uh, to review the project plans and we're of course, uh, glad to take your questions. Um, we're probably all familiar with the site, but this is one oh one Pinkney Street. It's a lot that extends north through to Myrtle Street. Where it's enclosed with a brick garden wall and that being the subject of our application today. The existing building at one oh one Pinkney Street dates to around eighteen forty. We conducted extensive research to try to document the history of this wall and we believe it likely dates to the mid twentieth century. There was no building permit for the wall. We could not find historic photographs, but we do have evidence that it was in place by nineteen sixty-five. And we think it may have existed in another form previously, either as a wall or, or some kind of fence or gate. Um, in the mid twentieth century, the property was owned by Leslie Hastings. He also enclosed the west side of the property during his ownership. And made improvements to the rear yard. So we think it was likely during his ownership that the current wall, uh, along Myrtle Street was built. The curb cut, which will be retained, has been in place since at least the mid nineteen seventies, but was previously located further west. Um, I'll share an image of that in a moment. And the door that you see within the wall is modern. It was installed in twenty sixteen, um, as approved by this commission. Just a few of the historic documents we found at the left, you have a map from eighteen sixty-one. Showing one oh one Pinkney soon after its construction. At this time, the area fronting, uh, Myrtle Street was largely a service area. It's marked here by yards and sheds. On the right is a map from nineteen twelve, after many more residential buildings were built along this stretch of Myrtle Street. And the parcel behind one oh one Pinkney, uh, remaining vacant. Um, none of the historic maps that we located show a wall along the Myrtle Street frontage. At the left is the first very clear evidence we have of the current wall being in place. This is a survey from nineteen sixty-five. It's a little bit hard to read, um, but it does note there is a wall, no gate. Um, prior surveys of the property we located did not confirm, um, that a wall was present. And then on the right, we have a photo from nineteen seventy-five showing the curb cut in place. This is from the National Register nomination for the historic district. At the left, this is the back of the property and curb cut in nineteen ninety-three, when it was located further west. Closer to one thirty-six Myrtle Street, and then you can see its current configuration on the right. It was rebuilt. In the nineteen nineties along with others at the end, uh, at this end of Myrtle Street. The prior location of the curb cut aligns with an area of rebuilding at the west end of the wall. Um, which we think suggests there was a prior iteration of the wall here, um, that may have included some passage through to the rear yard. Uh, existing conditions photographs, both of these are from the east of the site, from the east of the site. Showing the wall and its surrounding conditions, including some other, um, garage door openings and garages. You'll see. In, um, the photo on the right, at the left side of the wall, you can see it's built up sort of against that party wall of the adjacent building. And that building was constructed in nineteen twelve. Looking from the west of the site, here you can see that area of rebuilding along the edge of the wall. Again, we suspect there was something. Um, here, um, that was previously removed, leaving this remnant, um, behind, um, sort of attached to the, the adjacent property. A, a couple contextual photos on the right is a view of the site from nearly the end of Myrtle Street where it bends to meet Revere Street. And then on the right, just a view, um, from east of the prep, east of the, uh, project site, looking west down the hill. Um, as part of this application, we looked at numerous garage door openings on the hill. These are just some. Additional photos of very nearby properties. On the left is eighty-seven and eighty-nine Pinkney Street, which are other lots that extend through. To Myrtle Street. Um, the garage door, um, at eighty-nine was enlarged, um, way back in the nineteen sixties to its current proportions. And then in the photo on the right, you have working from the left, the backside of one oh five Pinkney Street. And then thirty-nine and forty-one West Cedar Street, which also front onto Myrtle Street. Um, and based on our work researching the permitting records, um, the garage is at thirty-nine and forty-one, uh, date to the nineteen seventies and eighties. So with that background, I'll pass it over to Tim to take us through the plans. Thank you.
Great, uh, thank you very much, Erin, and, uh, thank you for this opportunity to present this project, um, in the. Drawing that you're seeing on the screen, I've done a plan of Myrtle Street. The other, uh, garages that we just mentioned are on the lower left as the street turns. And then I show the, um, existing, uh, plan below and the proposed right above it. So we are making use of this existing curb cut and, um. There's also across the street as a whole, uh, no parking zone, so. We have a good maneuverability for in, entering and exiting the, the, the door. So the door is going to open right into the yard and, um, it'll be just a, a on-grade parking area just behind the door. The, um, the door would be a wooden door, uh, painted black, would be on, um, a bi-parting type door. So it would be, uh, remotely operated. There's also a, uh, manual operation that's mounted into the, the jam of the doorway. There's a, a detail you see right under the rendering. That shows we want to hide, um, the doorbell for the gate and the operator for the garage door in. This black, uh, trim that we would use around the inside of the opening. The, the gate that is in the wall right now would be reused. It would just be relocated about, uh. A foot or less to the east in order to center the garage door on the curb cut. The next, uh, drawing, if we can see that, Erin, would be, um. Just some elevations that show the, um, existing on the left and proposed on the right. And then, uh, picture of the hardware, it's the one on the left in that, uh, catalog cut that's on the existing gate that would remain. Above that is a doorbell that's done in a dull brass of color. And, uh, very slim and would again be fit into the side of the, the jam of the opening of the gate. And the operator for the garage door, um, next to that. So, you know, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Would you go back one slide, please? Yes, can you blow up that detail?
The, the jam detail?
Yes, I mean, it's, I can't read it.
Yep.
So would, would you describe what I'm looking at, please?
Certainly, yes. At the top of the drawing would be the side from the sidewalk, the exterior view. So we're looking at, uh, on the right of the detail is the gate or, you know, the door that's in the wall. And on the left would be a portion of the garage door. So it, um, it projects in a little deeper than the gate. And that gives me the place for the, the door to slide across, um, it'd be a track mounted above on the back of the wall. That supports the doors. The, uh, shaded areas, uh, the gray or the gray area would be the black painted wood trim. Uh, and then there's eight and a half inches of new brick, so that's the total distance we're looking to slide the gate, the doorway over. To the east.
Would you point, uh, you know, I, I do know how to read a drawing, uh, but, uh, oddly enough, but where is the door?
It's on the right-hand side. You can just see the swing of it there, uh, disappearing at the bottom of the sheet, um. So is it just a blow up of the actual, a plan of the jam of the, where the two doors come together, garage door and the person door?
You, you said it was a door that was in two parts?
The garage door is bi-parting, yes, it, it would slide open.
Oh, oh, it's, oh, okay, oh, I get it. Oh, thank you. Oh, oh, very good. Thank you very much.
Uh, Tim, while we're right there, um, uh, it, forgive me if, if, uh, you mentioned it, but what is, uh, what do we see at the bottom of the door? Uh, what's the surface there?
That would be granite. We would look to get some reclaimed glan- granite if we could, and, um, so it's a granite threshold. There is a, uh, uh, you know, some couple of inches of difference from each side of the opening because of the slope of the sidewalk. So this, uh, granite would have a sort of a two-sided pitch to create a ramp up into the parking area.
Uh, very good. That was my next question. Okay, very good.
But it's all flush and uh. We would keep the existing brickwork, which is kind of interesting um on the sidewalk. It changes direction at this uh area.
Right.
Well, where's Ralph to my rescue here? The bu- the bipodding door on the right slides over the. Door.
It'll clear it and um.
I know I'm gonna be told it's out of my purview, but I am licensed under. Uh, as is Ralph, uh under the police power of the state to prevent, to pro- protect property and pre- people. What's to prevent somebody getting skewered by that door as it. Walking through the door. I know that's supposedly out of our purview, but I can't help it. I it's in my blood.
Uh, it's a single family home, so it's not like there's a lot of people coming in and out. The um. Pull up and oh, uh uh you know, operated the door and they would, they would have to check to see that the gate wasn't open. But it uh it's a single family home. It's very few people here um.
Tim, you, Tim, you, I I I respect what you do, because we you've been before us many times. You want me to accept that as a? As a life safety issue? I mean, gotta be something to when. Some s- a- anyway, some electrical uh interlocker that prevents one from doing the other or something.
We could do that and and there could, we could set up, you know, some kind of light that would blink when someone was gonna open the door. Some uh, you know, some way to warn someone um. I did try to look at one, a door that would stack on one side, but the manufacturers didn't seem to have anything that could do that for me.
Okay, well, I mean, I appreciate you thinking about that, Tim, but I I I do need to move us along, because I think in particular. Uh, I would just remind my colleagues, uh. We we did have a a a reasoned decision that also involved a garage door. And uh I think uh in light of uh the decision in that case, we just need to be especially uh cautious uh to. Uh, avoid uh consideration of factors that are beyond our purview. Uh and and Mo, I certainly respect and appreciate your. Interest in life safety here, but uh we need to stick with what we're allowed to actually base our decision on. And uh, so I I think we gotta. Move on from that discussion.
But sir, what? I I've never seen the, I know what was decided in that other matter. But I've never seen the written document as we were promised from the attorneys to explain it. But. I I I think, I I think. If you have licensed architects on this board. They have to speak up when there's a perceived danger and not approve something that might cause. Uh, 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 an accident, which would therefore uh. A- anyway, I.
Well, okay, that's so just, just so I'm so I'm understanding, because so I can. Uh, and again, I'm not, I want to be clear, I'm not considering this in in my personal deliberation about this, but. The concern is the door. Slides open and the other door might be open. I mean, I, it looked like from the diagram that you can't have both at the same time.
That is correct, yes. I mean, if the garage door is open, then you have plenty of access or egress. You know, to get out of the yard. The issue that, you know, it's been brought up is. That chance that someone would be coming. Out the door at the same time that the garage door opened, so.
Well, I mean, you know, there there's a concern about, there there's lots of doors that open outward. It's a basic requirement in the fire code for a lot of situations, and so you can be hit by a door in a number of circumstances, I think uh. I guess I'm just not persuaded that this is such a uh. Significant issue uh of life safety that we ought to. Uh, risk, you know.
I, of course, everything's a significant issue of life safety. You can't, you. I mean, suppose it's a young child passing through that door while while the garage door is being opened. Or or somewhere or you know, you. There's gotta be a way.
Yeah, I could, I could interconnect the two so that the door wouldn't open if.
Tim, you can solve it.
Yeah, I can, yes.
I think you have to acknowledge that there's a problem.
Yes, I I acknowledge that and I can solve that problem. So that if the gate is, if the door is open, the garage door wouldn't operate.
And I think, Tim, to your point, I don't think that um creating that safety mechanism. Would change the design proposal that's before us. I think it's could be something that's done um. In a manner that's.
Be part of the door operator system and.
Right.
Yeah, and it's all on, it'd be all on the inside?
Yes, you wouldn't see.
Okay, so so.
What would be more convincing if the door all stacked uh to the west rather than um. Parting both in both directions?
Yeah, that was my first choice and I worked hard to do that. I couldn't find a manufacturer. I could continue to look. But they didn't seem to want to deal with the um.
The idea of in any condition ha- having two door swings that are in opposition to each other. So obviously in opposition is uh. Challenging at lea- at the very least. And hazardous possibly.
We we're the.
I I can solve that issue, yes, yeah.
We we're the uh o- owners commissioners and obviously we we're we're concerned about life safety also. So uh I could imagine a a little, you know, like you have when you open a closet where it opens, then that connects to the door and. That garage door can't open and 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 vice versa. So, you know, we're we're eager. We appreciate you guys bringing this up and uh. It does feel like there's a way we could solve that, at least from my perspective.
Of course.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you very much. So so uh suffice to say uh. You you're just, you're you're representing, Tim, that uh you can solve it just to and to to Aaron's point, just to be clear. Because of the stuff that's in our, that's in our purview, you can solve it in a manner that would satisfy commissioners uh the the the. The 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 general concern, but moreover importantly for our purposes and really only relevant for our purposes. Without uh changing to a- any of the exterior uh uh what you see from the outside.
That's correct, yeah. It would just be an electrical interlock between the garage door and a a sensor, you know, a contact.
Right, yeah. Okay, very good. Thank you, Tim. Uh, where were we? Uh, let's see. Um, okay, so we talked about uh the 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 sort of paving at the about the threshold. Talked about the doors uh. Any other clarifying questions, just again, at this point, to understand what is proposed? Uh, oh, okay, I do have one question for both Tim and and Aaron and forgive me, I. Uh, I realize you you would have said as much. Uh, I appreciate, by the way, very much the. Uh, clearly, you've done a lot of research and homework on this, and we really appreciate that, being so well prepared. Um. Do we know anything about why the curb cut was there? I appreciate your candor about, well, we sort of kind of know when it might have come in, but not for sure. And I appreciate your your uh reluctance to try to assert. Uh, a motivation, but wh- what if anything do we know about why is there a curb cut and just a wall?
Yeah, we don't know. Um, I mean, looking at what we've seen, we suspect that. There was some passage through um and the wall came later. Um, but we just don't have a date for the wall or the curb cut. We do know. Um, we have the photograph of the curb cut from seventy five. Um, there's a prior owner of the property who puts the curb cuts uh at least in the sixties. Um, but we don't know, we just don't know um why the curb cut and no wall, except that we suspect there was passage. Through to the rear yard.
Moving the curb cut seems really strange.
Uh, yeah, to that point, Aaron, uh uh it it uh, do we know why the curb cut was moved? Or when, or is there anything else that was going on at the time that would explain that?
There, there was other um roadwork and sidewalk sidewalk work being done on Myrtle Street in the nineteen nineties. And so we think that's when, just to flip back to the comparative.
The road, the road was reconstructed such that they may have, yeah.
The sidewalks, you know, there was the tree. Um, we know that there was a treatment that was put in the lamp post, so there was just. Street work that went in. Um, but we don't know specifically uh why it was moved.
Right, okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else, commissioners?
The street has been both front door and service drive for the community around it. Yeah, so the curb cut as an element is a uh a present as you go west on the street.
Mm-hmm, yes, it definitely has that mixed character.
Yeah, both directions, actually, Ralph. If you go up the street, there's a garage as well.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Just started to flip the wrong way.
I'll just, I'll just add that we, um, I touch base with the Public Improvement Commission and they have no record of this curb cut. But their records are also incomplete, so.
Okay. Uh, okay, um commissioners, any other, again, just clarifying questions for the moment? We'll take public comment. I suspect there might be a lot of it, so I want to get. Make sure we get to that quickly and efficiently, and we'll certainly have a discussion. Okay, let's go ahead and uh do that. Again, if you want to be heard on the record, uh please. Uh, raise your hand using the button probably at the bottom of your Zoom panel. And Nick will call on you. He's gonna need to unmute you. Uh, please be succinct in your comments as much as possible and keep them brief, because we may have a number of folks who want to be heard. Thank you.
Mark, should I do um the ones that were submitted first via email?
Uh, you want to just summarize those? Yes, let me just say for the record, uh, because some of you may be on the call as well. I just want to reassure you that uh anyone who submitted written comments prior to the hearing, even if it was right before it started. Uh, uh, those comments are, will be officially entered into the record. Uh, you're welcome to make a verbal comment now if you like as well, but we just want you to know that uh your comments uh have been received and uh will be part of the official record.
Okay, um, so I'll just um summarize just in support or in opposition and then the person. And if I have their address, I'll also list their address. Um, so um. First, my computer is gonna be slow. Okay, uh, so the first uh. Uh, letter of support I received was uh from Dr. Amanda Kay and Dr. Ray Dunn. Uh, both at seventy Mount Vernon Street in support of this project. Uh, the second email that I was received uh was from an Andres Films. And uh he they are loca- uh from Michelle and Andres Films. They're at fifty four Cedar Lane Way. They do support this project. The next project or letter received uh is from uh Lindsay Noker, who is at ninety nine Pinkney Street. She also supports this project. The next letter that I received was from Timothy McKillen and uh Timothy, um, let's see. Uh, I believe uh he supports this as well. The next letter I have uh that was received via email today uh was from Darcy O'Brien. Darcy did not provide an address, but she is in support of the project. Just double checking to make sure. Okay, yes. Okay, the next email that I received is from, let's see, Stephanie, um. Uh, dude, uh, dude, to Kewitz, sorry, uh PhD, uh Stephanie is a supporter. She's at eighty two Pinkney Street. Stephanie, if I said your name, last name wrong, I apologize. The next one is Catherine Keeney. Uh, Catherine uh is in support. She lives at one seventeen Myrtle Street. The next email received is from, uh, let's see, there's a, there's a duplicate there. The next one is from George Hadley. Uh, George is at eighty two Pinkney Street and um. He is in support. The next letter I have is uh from, this is a very um intense one. Oh, this is from Diana Cauldron from. For Charles River Square and she is in support of this project. The next letter that was received is from uh Holly Swan and Eric Swan. Uh, they are located at one oh seven Myrtle Street and they support this project. Two more. Uh, the next letter received is from. Sorry, some of these are larger files. I apologize. Waiting. And that's the Civic Association, sorry, uh, and then the last but not at least on the last. Third is um an email. Number. Very sick in a bit to load these. All right, almost there. Uh, let's see here. All right, um, this one's not opening yet. I can circle back to this one in just a second. So let's do public comment. Uh, now the um. Uh, the public comment from folks on the call here. So first up, I will hand it over to, um, oh, sorry, uh, this is from D- uh Daryl. Uh, um, let's see, it looks like it is the adjacent neighbor and it appears as though. It's a pretty long email, but he is in position. I do believe he's here tonight, so I'll let him speak to that. Um, so first up, uh, for folks that want to speak, I have Rochelle. Um, Rochelle, go ahead.
Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose this application as submitted, based substantially on a twenty fifteen commission decision. Permitting the addition of a door to this wall, which found that this rear garden wall was not a facade. And thus do not violate guideline A seven, which prohibits new openings and facades. The existence of the curb cut, along with historical maps and records of an enclosed yard, provide physical and pictorial evidence. That the proposed garage door qualifies as new work and satisfies guideline A three. As of appropriate detail in regard to current contextual surroundings. End of comment.
Thank you, Rochelle. Uh, the next uh comment we have available is uh Dee Pommick. Uh, go ahead.
Hello, hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Uh, this is Daryl Pommakter. I live at one thirty six Myrtle Street, which is the downhill house. I've lived on Beacon Hill since nineteen sixty seven. I've lived in this house since nineteen seventy. I'm an MIT graduate civil engineer. One of my careers was in construction, including working for Ben Thompson and built the Design Research Building. But a lot of his hands-on renovations as well. So I sent in an email that has a page of six bullet points. And four pages of details that answers many of the questions that have been raised and refutes. Many of the claims that have been made in the application, which are beyond erroneous. And I can go through a few of those and I can answer questions. But attached to that email are three attachments that are extremely valid. Two of them, right, so let me just go through my bullet points quickly. Most simply, the very longstanding, published and practiced historic Beacon Hill District Architectural Guide line has been. New openings and facades shall not be allowed. There's an exception for restoration of original features, which applies only to existing windows and doors or openings. And only if there's documentation for the re- for the restoration of that door or window opening feature. So that basis alone should be enough to deny that. We'll get back to how it was ignored in two thousand fifteen, but that has been enforced since nineteen ninety three. At least in and earlier. And the other openings that are pictured are all earlier, I know from personal experience. One going back to the fifties, another seventy, another eighty, another eighty. Second point, an earlier application for a very similar new opening in garage doors in the same wall from the prior owner was denied. It's not mentioned now, not included in this review. It's certainly very relevant. And it was not mentioned in the earlier nine, two thousand fifteen new door in the same wall review and approval. Now, that proposal, the prior owner was Leonard Sonje, who was an architect. And lived in that building since the early sixties, maybe the late fifties. Some of you probably remember Lenny. I think uh it would be good if um you could put up my attachment, which is his proposal from nineteen ninety three that was denied. Is it's extremely relevant to what we're looking at now. My third point, the history and earlier wall and of the curb cut is or should be irrelevant following new openings. The purpose of the Beacon Hill Architect. The purpose of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission is to preserve the historic exterior appearance. That does not include only original materials and exclude later replacements in the current consistent historic style. This current wall is older than the current gas lamps on Beacon Hill. The Beacon Hill gas lamps were reinstalled between sixty-two and sixty-four, doubled in ninety-five to ninety-six and are replaced ongoing. My fourth point, facts correcting inaccurate and misleading statements on wall and curb history cut are included below. I definitely want to address that this wall dates from nineteen nineteen and that the curb cut explicitly dates from when the gas lamps went in, but I'll come back to that. Also, the fill-in parking pad detailed would damage neighboring properties. Now, this is inside the door, but you're not supposed to be proving a facade that overloads the properties that would, should not be built. There is more than three feet of fill with a concrete cap going from side to side that will dynamically, going twenty-three feet in that will dynamically and hydraulically loading the neighboring walls, further increase the water table and push water through the foundation walls and up through the ground slabs, which their prior construction in two thousand two, extending the rear uh, owl building, demolishing that rear owl, building a new storage room, another seven feet down and an extended owl on top of it dams up the water flow. Uh, and my last point, the Epsilon Senior Preservation Planner Contractor for this application was the B H L Architectural Commission Preservation Planner for the third, two thousand fifteen approval of a new door in the same wall. She has responsibility for not including in this review the nineteen ninety-three denial for similar proposed changes in the same wall nor in the two thousand fifteen review. The two thousand fifteen review, which is my third attachment, should also be put up. It was a very controversial decision. The four new commissioners did not support the longtime Chair Joel Pierce, and this is in the approval letter, who reminded of the guideline, no new openings with no exceptions. They would not second him. They speculated that it only applied to front facades, not to secondary or to garden walls, and they passed it four to one against his name. Totally ignoring the record of decisions, totally ignoring the guideline and totally ignoring the definition of facade and garden wall. Now, to address some of the specifics, I think in the inaccuracies in the application, it would be best to go to the application and let's pull up the plot plans. And in my email, I detailed the errors in those five plot plan maps. Can you pull that up? Please?
Uh, Darrell, I'm gonna need you to wrap up here. I mean, we, we, uh,
Let me tell you, number, number one, Atlas map from eighteen, I'm gonna show you how the building was, the building was built between nineteen twelve and nineteen nineteen, when the owner of the Pinkney Street Lot purchased the last open Myrtle Street Lot, joined it to his house, renovated his house and cut down the rear hillside five feet to make it his yard. And the map of that time in nineteen nineteen that she says does not show a wall, has a white line on Myrtle Street that is the same weight of the lines around the buildings and the neighboring buildings and has a dimension that is ten inches less than the plot line, totally indicating a wall was built. And the fact that there was a five-foot drop from Myrtle Street, the northern slope, the back of the hill, for what was now one of the biggest houses on Beacon Hill and the biggest gardens on Beacon Hill, made perfect sense if you recognize that perspective. The curb cut, Leonard Sonier maintains, and they try to maintain that he put in the curb cut. He tipped the crew when the lights were put back in. That was sixty-two to sixty-four. I started walking Beacon Hill in sixty-four and the gas lamps were in. So that curb cut was put in between sixty-two and sixty-four by Leonard, who wanted a spot for his Avante. She maintains that he built the wall in sixty-five. Leonard is a hard-working architect with two buildings, ten apartments, two kids. He didn't build that wall at the time and he sure as hell would not have built it without room for his Avante. Now, in nineteen ninety-five, Myrtle Street was rebuilt and I project managed for the Civic Association. And I asked for the, for the, the street rebuilding and I asked for the tree pit that had been downhill from my entrance and lost several trees from all the traffic coming around the corner and the service vehicles for Pinkney Street parked there. I asked for the tree pit to move, be moved to the upside. Peter Scarpignato, who was the assistant for Joe Cazaza, the longtime, you know, Public Works Commissioner, investigated through City Hall and could find no record of that curb cut. But the contract was let, so he agreed to shift the tree pit uphill and shift the opening uphill. You'll also notice that the opening, the tree, the curb cut has a single piece of beautiful granite, ten feet long and has, uh, the brick is laid parallel with the street, nice architectural cuts. And it also was probably leveled out at the time in honor of Lenny, the architect, who asked God it done. If this was approved and this, and so the two thousand fifteen decision is also improper, both because of the contortion on definition and because of the new opening, new opening in a wall. But there's no need for this second opening. That could be built in the main opening, just like it has in one of the earlier ones tonight, had a doorway put into the main opening. So you are absolutely correct in that and I'm very happy to have a couple senior experienced architects listening, who I'm sure this makes a lot of sense to and hopefully have fond memories of Lenny Sonier. Thank you very much. And I'm available to answer any explicit questions, but the first five documents, well, the Atlas map, she says shows yards and rear yards and sheds. No, it shows yards and sheds on no lower Myrtle, no rear. It does not show lot lines. Myrtle lots were always totally separate from Pinkney Street, going back to eighteen fifty-six and earlier. This lot, that lot goes back, it was Myrtle number three on an eighteen fifty-six survey. And then in two, in eighteen eighty-two, uh, it shows, uh, the rear yard fronting Myrtle Street. No, it doesn't show lot lines. The Myrtle lots were still totally separate, including my newly built home on it. Number three, this is the drawings we, you scanned through before. Atlas map from nineteen twelve, showing the subject property and rear yard after the construction of one thirty-two Myrtle Street in the east. Uh, no, the lot lines will show all Myrtle Street is, uh, all Myrtle Street is still separate lots from Pinkney Street. And my house is addressed, there's one thirty-two Myrtle. Now, my house, when one thirty-two Myrtle, the current one thirty-two Myrtle was built in, in nineteen twelve, the address of my house had been one thirty-two. They readdressed me to one thirty-six, so that the new building got one
Darrell, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I
In the nineteen nineteen joined plot plan, the, the wall is there and it's dimensioned. I'm available to answer questions and you absolutely should look at my email. You'll get a few chuckles out of it as well.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else want to be heard here in, in the room, as it were? Again, we have the letters.
Mark, hang on, just for the record, I just want to let you know, commissioners, you have, you have Darrell's emails in the public comment section that was submitted to you this afternoon, just for the record.
Thank you, Nick. Yes.
Uh, we, we have some other public comments.
Yeah.
Um, all right, uh, let's see, next up we have is, um, is Leah. I hope I said that right, Leah. Apologies if I didn't.
Thank, thank you so much. My name is Leo McCauley and I am a neighbor. I live directly across the street from this proposed new opening. And I think that the comments you heard earlier from the opposition lay out the facts and point out the guidelines, uh, forbidding any new opening. I, I think where I might be most helpful here is to talk about the lived experience in this particular corner of Myrtle Street. Um, we have lived in this area of Myrtle Street since two thousand eleven. And this particular area of Myrtle Street is quite different from the rest of Beacon Hill because it has a dog leg turn, a nine-degree right-hand turn. And as a result, it has a lot of complexities that other areas of Beacon Hill don't have, such as trucks, um, Amazon trucks, FedEx trucks, parking up on the curb and on the sidewalks. We've had just a number of difficulties over the years with our lampposts being hit, et cetera. There are already in our area, just on this short block, five garage openings, which add to the congestion and the chaos in this particular area of Beacon Hill. I really believe that the character of our block is needing to be preserved here. That there is a brick wall, which is beautiful, that is consistent with the historic nature of Beacon Hill, even if it was only built in nineteen sixty-five. There aren't many stretches of brick wall remaining. And on Myrtle Street, where we are already so much a service area, where our Pinkney neighbors and our West Cedar neighbors, who back up, leave their garbage out on our corners. Um, we feel very strongly that we need to preserve this particular stretch in its nature and adding one more garage is not necessary in addition to being against what we see as the guidelines. I say all of this having been before this commission, not once, but twice. And I absolutely feel for the Pinkney Street owners wanting to have their home be more functional. And it's something we all face in Beacon Hill. But there are parking garages in the area with openings and space. Uh, we use one ourself and they're just a short walk away and it's something that we all, um, need to use instead of creating more garages and more congestion on our cute little Myrtle Street. So with that, I thank you for your time. I, um, you know, took a lot for me to come on here and to oppose, but I feel very strongly that this particular corner on Myrtle Street does not need any more complexity and any more congestion that it already has and that we really should preserve the beautiful brick and historic nature. And that is part of this commission's duty is to help us do that. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Leah. Before we continue, I, I just want to, uh, remind uh, the commission and the public that, uh, our jurisdiction is limited and our purview is narrow. And therefore we must restrict our consideration, uh, in this and every other matter, uh, to issues strictly of architectural, historical appropriateness. It is beyond our purview and, and, and we are not to consider impacts regarding traffic, parking, maneuverability of cars, uh, a- and so forth. And so I would just ask, uh, anyone else wanting to make public comments, please, uh, restrict your comments to uh, the application at hand specifically as it pertains to architectural and historical appropriateness. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Next up we have is Charlotte. Charlotte, uh, go ahead.
You have to unmute her, Nick.
I got her.
I would like to, um, say that, um, I have been a long-term resident of Beacon Hill and I'm actually, I was the owner until this past Friday at noon, um, of one thirty-three Myrtle Street for, um, which is directly across from this wall for, um, thirty-plus years. Um, when we bought the property, we were given a little packet by, um, the previous owner, who had lived in that property for a good, um, fifteen years herself as well, um, about this wall and about the issues with the wall. And, um, in that packet, all the information is very consistent with what Mr. Pommeter has, um, um, given you guys this evening. So I am not going to go into that detail again. The problem I have with this application is that we're talking about a wall, a wall where a door was allowed, um, after it being denied, but which was overseen, um, as we heard. Um, and that door was put in because Mr. Sony was afraid that then Senator Carey's house would become under siege and he wanted to have a third means of egress. Um, the other, um, a question he had was also, or reason he had was that he could shovel the snow on his Myrtle Street side of the property um, if he got that door. Well, none of those things have ever happened. Um, so then we come to the garage door and to put the garage door in, the other door that was put in has to be moved. So at this point, we have a wall that's been up for a good seventy years, probably. Um, that is going to be completely torn down and rebuilt because you don't just cut a hole in it and move a door over and sort of half rebuild it back. So that's really what the commission should be concerned with. The only other house that has been taken down ever since I have been aware of is, um, one on, um, I think it is Chestnut. Um, and, um, that was an overnight takedown. Um, and this would be identical and there is also one on Beaver Place. Um, but this would be identical, taking the whole wall down and just sort of imagining it was never there for, um, someone else's, um, if I might say, financial gain. Um, I strongly oppose of it, um, to it because also, um, it affects, um, our view or what used to be our view and the new owner's view um, out of their windows. Um, and, um, it also will affect the fact that when they walk out of their house, um, cars could be backing up out of that driveway. Um, and furthermore, I think the buildings, as Mr. Pommeter pointed out, um, down the hill from this whole platform that has to be built to even make it accessible for a car to go into, um, raises, um, water and drainage issues for the lower part of the hill. Um, again, you might say not our problem, but I hope that, um, the, um, um, historical preservation of Beacon Hill will, um, be put first and not, um, the fact that we have a very smart and clever applicant who, um, has no, um, no stop to what he wants. Um, thank you very much and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Charlotte. Okay, next up we have, um, are the Olivers. I'll, um, Christopher, go ahead.
Hi, um, this is actually Kristoff Oliver and my wife, uh, we own, uh, apartment one and apartment four at one thirty-two uh, Myrtle Street, so immediately abutting, um, uh, the proposed project. And I guess, um, we'd like to be, uh, on the record in support of Darrell's, uh, the, the opposition that Darrell Pommeter articulated. You know, if, if there is a rule against new openings and a previous application for a garage door has been denied, I guess why shouldn't go through this time, uh, is what we're wondering. Uh, obviously, we're concerned about drainage issues and structural issues on the, on the, on the load-bearing walls. Um, uh, I realize that's not necessarily, uh, 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 in, in your purview, but, um, that, that notion of earlier application being, um, uh, denied and, and, uh, an existing rule against new openings should preclude this, uh, from getting, from getting approved. Uh, and I would certainly encourage the commissioners to, to read the extensive details and history uh, that Mr. Pommeter contributed, uh, uh, to this forum. Uh, thank you very much.
It's Kristoff. I'm sorry for the miscommunicating or misphoning or misusing of your name. Sorry, I have a friend named Kristoff, so I know.
And, and not the last, so don't worry.
Thank you. Okay, um, next up we have is T. Clemmons. T. Clemmons, go ahead. Able to mute yourself?
Yes.
Good.
Okay, uh, Tom Clemmons, living on Goodwin Place, not in a butter to the property. And, uh, I, I'm, I really have a question and that is, as I understand it, the twenty fifteen, uh, uh, decision. the twenty fifteen uh, uh, decision and the uh, Beacon Hill Civic Association's uh, non-opposition uh, to this proposal are based on the premise uh, that this wall does not constitute a facade. And therefore, uh, no openings in it are not uh, of concern uh, to the Architectural Commission. And I'm wondering, wh- what does constitute a facade? And what distinguishes this uh, from other uh, brick surfaces uh, on Beacon Hill uh, that would be facades?
Thanks for your question, Tom. If if you will uh, uh, oblige us just a few more minutes, I promise uh, your, your question will be addressed uh, in time. Uh, it it will figure, I believe, in our deliberations. It certainly figures. I can tell you, I could preview for already, already uh, in my view of this. Um, so uh, yeah, we will get to that. I just, I just want to make sure we get through the public comments and then uh, uh, sort of take the issues in turn. Uh, it's a good question. It's uh, certainly relevant, very relevant. I appreciate you bringing it up. I was gonna bring it up anyway. Uh, and I I uh, I I promise uh, we will um, elucidate the reasoning.
Okay, uh, great. Then the only other uh, thought I have is uh, that the question was raised earlier by one of the uh, commissioners uh, as to the uh, purpose for the curb cut and the fact that it was moved. And I think that uh, evidence has been adduced, or at least uh, i- i- inference raised uh, that that curb cut never served uh, an actual entry into the property in question. So I don't think it should be considered uh, probative uh, in terms of the history of uh, this wall. Uh, unless it can be more definitively uh, identified as to its original construction. Uh, that's just my thought. So I'm done.
Uh, thank you, Tom. And since you brought it up, uh, I appreciate that. Again, we'll get to that too, but let me just say, uh, it it would be relevant even, even apart from whether or not it constitutes uh, proof of when, the, of there being a, a, a prior opening or something like that. To the extent that it speaks to uh, it it's, it's also relevant to the rightness of the application and whether or not, if there were no curb cut, uh, if they would need a curb cut in order to have a garage, so they would need to go through pick. And there is a curb cut there now, and so that part of the process is rendered moot. So it's, it's also uh, instructive with respect to the rightness of the application. Thanks.
Okay, uh, next up is uh, Timon. Uh, go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. This is Tim Osta and Jen Osta of one thirty-two Myrtle Street, Unit Two. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to to speak here in front of the group. Um, uh, obviously, um, we're in line with uh, how Daryl so eloquently put um, laid out that uh, this should be um, this request should be denied and we are not in favor of of um, changing uh, the historical architecture of the wall. Um, it was denied in two thousand fifteen and I'm not really quite sure, you know, why we're back in the room revisiting this and what's changed. So um, obviously, as Daryl laid out, um, in line with chairman, what you're saying is the, you know, keeping the historical uh, integrity of Beacon Hill. Um, it seems like it it should really be an open and closed case here. I'm not quite sure where I'm, what I'm missing or what's changed, but um, as of uh, our stance, we are uh, not in favor of uh, this change. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much. Okay, Mark, there's no other public comments, so we're gonna close it up for this application and we'll turn it back to you for deliberation.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, everyone for your uh, verbal comments, as well as the folks who submitted uh, uh, comments in writing in advance. Uh, to that last point, uh, Nick, forgive me, but uh, I just want to try to uh, at the outset here, get some clarity on uh, in case there's any lingering confusion, and I think I have some. What was just referred to a moment ago as the twenty fifteen denial. Um, there is, uh, there's a, there is uh, we have a letter uh, approving the door, the the the, the door that exists now, correct?
Correct.
Uh, so ca- can we just clarify for everyone's benefit? What is meant by the twenty fifteen denial? Is there, do we have a denial letter for a garage door application?
Yep, I sent it to you this afternoon. Would you like me to put it on the screen?
Yes, please.
Folks, public comment is over, so we're not accepting any other public comment, so um, you can lower your hands. So this was, this was the letter. Oh, sorry, guys.
Yeah, this I did see, and I did thank you for sending that.
This is twenty fifteen. This is the only letter that I was able to find. Um, so not only did I contact the um, the Archives Department, I searched through all of our files this afternoon, um, and this was the only letter related, sorry. Apparently, I'm new to computers. Um, this is the only letter that um, I was able to find related to that rear door um, that I have in our records. It's possible there's something else in the archives, but I was not able to locate it. Um.
Okay, uh, thank you. That's what I wanted to clarify. Uh, we do not have a record then of of a prior formal proposal before this commission for a garage door at this location and it's, and a, and a subsequent denial. Is that correct, to the best of our knowledge?
Yeah, uh, and then the the only other one, oh, Aaron, go ahead, when, if you need to chime in.
I was, I was just going to clarify, the current owners of the property have owned, and Robin Fiona, jump in if I'm incorrect, you've owned the property for twenty-eight years and you've never brought forth a proposal to install a garage door.
Okay, thank you. Uh, it, sorry, Robin Fiona, uh, do you want to just affirm that? Is that correct? Thank you. Uh, Aaron, since you've got the floor and since the letter is up there and uh, Mr. Palmer brought it up anyway, but there's your signature on this very letter, uh, not to put you on the spot here, but just again, to try to get as much clarity on this issue a- as um, as we can. Uh, given your former capacity uh, in what's now the Office of Historic Preservation, uh, do you recall uh, in your capacity as Preservation Planner for the Architectural Commission during your tenure, uh, such an application for a garage door at this property?
Uh, no, uh, I was served at the commission for two years, so um, I think anything that Nick looked for, I mean, Nick did the search, anything from my time there would have turned up in that search.
Okay, thank you. I just, I I, again, I I, um, it seems like there, there seems to be some confusion over this, but uh, officially, we have no record.
Chairman, if I may in- interrupt you, I'm sorry to do so, and I'm not going to get into responding to all the assertions, which I think a, a number of which are untrue, but I just wanted to uh, correct Aaron. We've owned the house for twenty-five years, not twenty-eight.
Okay. Uh, but it's still, the the statement still stands, though. In 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 that twenty-five years, you have not uh, made an application for a garage door before.
Yeah, that, that is correct. We have not sought one. We, we're doing it now for uh, uh, personal reasons. I'm not going to get, get into those.
We don't need to.
But that's right.
Right. Uh, we don't need to know the why. Yes, Nick.
Um, that package that I sent you this afternoon um, is from nineteen ninety-three. And that does have this. But this was, um, am I, I'm showing this right?
Yes, I'm seeing it.
This is from October twenty-seven, nineteen ninety-three. Um, see, and it was uh, to die without prejudice, your application for installation of an opening for a garage door in the garden wall. Mission determined that this more information was needed regarding the history of this site and age of the wall. So they're basically having the same questions that we're having right now.
Okay, thank you. And perhaps this is what was referred to, and and just to be very clear, you have one-on-one, Pinky. Okay, so this is the prior owner, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so, so again, for the, for the, for the record and and important for for clarification sake here, this is a denial without prejudice, not a denial. The uh, Architectural Commission issues three types of determinations. And in a nutshell, in layman's terms, uh, they are yes, no, and not yet. And a yes is an approval, a no is a denial, and a, and a not yet, a denial without prejudice is not yet. Uh, and as the term implies very directly, uh, it is uh, without any, making any determination uh, as to the uh, appropriateness uh, of the application. As you can see here, uh, we denied without prejudice an application tonight with the windows on on Chestnut Street to give the applicant leave to consider other options and and uh, find out from his client uh, whether they would be amenable to those other options. And we, we make no determination about the merits of the application uh, or signal uh, how we're gonna uh, ultimately decide it. And so this is uh, helpful to know that indeed there was an application, again, not by the Sonys or this applicant, by a prior owner, uh, and it was denied without prejudice. Uh, typically, the procedure would be, the applicant could then, at their uh, uh, discretion, uh, come back with uh, a revised application, attempting to address uh, in this case, the request for further information and so forth. But so, Nick, I I would put you on the spot, but as far as we know, we don't have a subsequent uh, uh, application with a subsequent determination.
Not according to the archivist that I spoke to this afternoon. So this was the only thing that she was able to find.
Okay, so, and you'll see here, uh, more information is needed regarding the history of the site and the age of the wall. Terminal site visit was necessary to ascertain whether or not there's any evidence of prior openings in the wall. Okay, so we don't know uh, whether to what extent um, uh, such information was ever provided. But uh, what we do evidently, uh, we, we have no record of a subsequent application uh, providing any response to that. And more importantly, we have no record of a subsequent determination. Um, so uh, I don't think that prior denial without prejudice is at all determinative uh, i- in in this case. It's uh, it simply reaffirms uh, that uh, I think we're all asking the right questions. Uh, we're asking the same questions now. Uh, I think the, the uh, the applicant has anticipated those same questions here and has done uh, has made efforts uh, to try to address them. So I don't re- really think that changes the equation at all uh, in my mind. So anyway, public comment is over. I think uh, we, we have a, a sense of what's proposed here. Uh, let me again just uh, reiterate, I think it's just important in this case because of a recent uh, decision regarding a, a proposed garage door that uh, we need to restrict our deliberations and certainly our, our consideration and ultimately our determination uh, to only those factors that reflect uh, the statutory language of architectural and historical uh, appropriateness, uh, taking into account uh, whatever information we have available in order to make uh, that determination. We are not to consider parking, traffic, noise, uh, light, uh, the other uh, kinds of uh, of impacts as they are beyond our purview. And we need to simply consider the architectural appropriateness and historical appropriateness uh, of the proposal. Uh, finally, uh, I think what is instructive, if not determinative, is that there is a prior approval uh, for the door, uh, the pedestrian door that is in the um, uh, that is now in the wall, uh, that uh, is what was made on a pri- prior uh, application. Um, now to uh, Tom Clemmons's question, uh, let's get into it in terms of uh, how we think about this from architectural and appropriate and historical appropriateness, uh, the, the perspective. Um, I think we, we've not been able to definitively determine the age of the wall. Uh, we've not been able to definitively uh, determine the vintage uh, of the curb cut. Uh, uh, except to say that uh, the best evidence we have suggests that they are certainly not original features to this prop- property, but uh, also uh, not uh, extremely old. I think uh, there's certainly uh, a suggestion that uh, a wall may date to as far back as nineteen fifteen. Uh, I have not, not heard anything that would uh, convince me conclusively uh, that this wall uh, in this configuration dates uh, from, from that uh, period. Um, so we do have a guideline, uh, and it was, I think, uh, recited uh, a couple of times, but I'll just uh, I'll read it again for uh, um, for, for again, our, our mutual uh, benefit here. And uh, this is uh, introductory guideline, A seven, new openings and facade shall not be allowed and no changes shall be made to existing window and door openings unless they involve restoration of original features for which there's supporting documentation of the original feature. Um, we also, I, I think so, so um, a high, at a high level, the guidelines are not law. They are not uh, regulations made pursuant to law. They are nevertheless uh, an essential tool in historic preservation that we rely on. Very importantly, their purpose uh, to uh, to paraphrase the Office of Historic Preservation, uh, which is in charge of ensuring that historic districts in the city of Boston have guidelines and encourages those that don't to make them, uh, is ostensibly to provide guidance, as the name implies, as to what uh, might most likely be uh, approved or not approved uh, for prospective applicants coming by the commission and uh, coming to the commission. And similarly, to inform commissioners likewise uh, of uh, some sense of de facto standards that we have applied over the years. And on that point specifically, we have had a number of applications. We did, Nick did extensive research uh, on this question with respect to the application, the prior application at forty-six Beacon Street. Uh, and it is in fact the case, notwithstanding the fact that there is a guideline about new masonry openings. Uh, a number of garage doors have been approved uh, by this commission over the many decades, the now seventy years uh, in which it's existed, some dating all the way back to the beginning of the historic district. Um, one of the things that we articulated in the case of forty-six Beacon, which was, we, we uh, ultimately decided to deny that application uh, was that the uh, the context in which uh, fairly consistently, from what was Nick, Nick was able to determine, in which we had approved garage doors or the enlargement of existing doors into garage doors in the past has been uh, pretty much exclusively uh, in an architectural context that would generally be characterized as a backstreet. Um, ultimately, our decision at forty-six Beacon rested on the uh, the, the uh, the conclusion that uh, spruce court, it, for many years, had, has not been characterized by a backstreet and it was debatable as to ever, if it was. Um, in my opinion, this is a backstreet. Uh, as evidenced by the several additional uh, garage doors, both below and above the subject property, and moreover, by the documented history between the maps and what else we know about the property uh, that demonstrates that these lots originally uh, were open. Um, all up the block, uh, sort of similarly configured. There were no houses built on them uh, originally, and the maps demonstrate that. And then moreover, uh, we do have additional documentary evidence that shows that this curve in the street that connects Myrtle Street to Revere Street uh, was a later addition. Like, do you have that handy by any chance, Nick?
I do. Uh, you, yes. Uh, I knew you would ask this, so I have it prepped. Um, but let me just bring up Map Junction. Um, so this is from eighteen fifty-two. Um, here is Myrtle Street, which was then known as Zone Street. Sorry, am I showing this?
Yes, and so uh, and can you just tell us, in case it's not clear? Yeah, thank you. That's great. Um, so under the six there, that's not a, uh, yeah, so, right, you can see there is no street there. It doesn't connect to Revere, right? It's just a lot, but it's not a street.
Correct.
Okay, um, now, I promised Tom Clemmons, uh, we would get into this question uh, and uh, raised by the Civic Association. The guideline, again, the, 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 the plain reading of the language says new openings and facades shall not be allowed. Uh, in my opinion, and in my general understanding, now of having served ten years on this commission, uh, and otherwise, uh, this is not a facade. Uh, a facade is uh, a face of a building. And in this forty-six Beacon case, that was very important because indeed, the proposed garage door opening was in a facade. In fact, an original facade for the building, uh, as it's, the, the, the building that's there now. Uh, there was not even a later addition to an L. You see that in some places, the very common in Beacon Hill. Um, uh, later additions to L's and garden walls at the back of properties and so forth. Um, uh, in that case, it was a proposed garage door opening in a facade, indeed an original facade for the current building. Uh, this was never a facade of a building, uh, as the term is generally understood, and it's not now. And so I would indeed, Tom, make a distinction uh, in this case, which separates it from the forty-six Beacon Street case and And so I would indeed, Tom, make a distinction in this case, which separates it from the forty six Beacon Street case, and in my opinion. And I don't believe this is a facade within the meaning of. The guideline. Again, the guideline is not law, but it's certainly instructive as to where we ought to start in terms of deliberating over this. I think I'll just show my cards. The wall is not, again, it. We don't have firm evidence that it's as old as nineteen fifteen. Again, but it's not ancient, it's not an original feature of the building. And. So I don't think it's particularly important historically in the grander scheme of things. It doesn't have distinguishing. Particularly distinguishing characteristics. And so I think for me, given the combination that this is. Very clearly still a backstreet, notwithstanding the addition of a number of houses on on this area. I think the context is certainly still a backstreet. I don't think the wall is particularly historic. It's old, but not especially old. And I think for those reasons. This is a reasonably sensitive treatment. It would maintain the wall. Obviously, it would simply add another larger opening. But it would not remove from the architectural history of the district. The 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 understanding that that ever there was a wall here, that. Story of the evolution of this lot will remain. I think just as it was, that someone put a wall there at some point. Might have been a hundred years ago, might have been sixty, seventy, we don't know. Might have been another wall there. We don't know when exactly this wall came in. But this wall substantially will remain, so we won't, we would not be erasing that aspect of the architectural history. Were we to allow this? And that's why I think I support the approval of this application. Other commissioners?
I like what you support the application.
What's that?
Ralph, I said I support the application.
Thank you, Ralph.
Well, Chairman, you leave me breathless.
It's good or bad.
It's a very good summary. I was, I thought we were going to have to. Document. The other decisions about garage doors being built into walls. Which you say have been done over the years. But if you, if you know that is to be a fact, we don't have to document it.
Yes, certainly, we do have the documentary evidence of prior approvals. And Nick again did an extensive piece of research on this. We reviewed them all carefully. It's, you know, candidly, like everything, this is the seventy years of history, it's not a perfect record. It's it's, you know, harder to find things that are denials than approvals because, or sorry, of things that were. You know, not proposed or or and so forth, but. Yes, I think the firm conclusion from that prior research was consistently. Where garage doors have been approved, they have been in the specific context of a backstreet, which is to say Branch Street. Mount Vernon Place, Beaver Place, Byron Street, to the extent that it's visible. And so forth. And I think the reverse is probably also true that where where. You don't have that architectural context, they were not allowed.
Thank you.
Tim, can I ask you, since it was raised? What is the plan in terms of how you would actually build this? Would it be necessary indeed to take the whole wall down and reconstruct it, or can you simply make an opening? I know you got to move the other door and so forth, but.
No, we're able to insert a steel beam as a lintel there in the wall. We've done this kind of thing many times. And our intent is not to tear down the wall.
Okay, and. You'll reuse the brick as where possible?
Yes, everything would be toothed back in, it wouldn't be just cutting of the brick, so we. Want to restore the wall to its existing appearance with the addition of the garage door.
Right, okay, thank you for that clarification. Anyone else? Mo, did you have a view? I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I've just been listening and I. It's a lot to absorb about. Is a wall, is a garage wall a facade or? How many of these have been done before? I mean, you've you you in leading this in the few years I've been on the commission. Been very careful about being consistent about about these matters. And I don't have that history. The same history you do. So I would rely on the research that Nick would do if it was necessary to prove it, but. We may not have to go through that exercise.
Yeah, I mean, I will tell you for what it's worth, I have reached the, I think, I think, and I appreciate you saying that, I think. Indeed, it is very important for us to make a consistent. Record of decision, particularly in cases like this, which understandably and not unreasonably. Create concerns among the butters and even controversy, if I can say so. And but but importantly, I think the the. Nature of the consistency to which we ought to aspire and that I've certainly aspired to. Is not a consistency in the outcome, but in the reasoning by which we reach the outcome. And that's why I reached the opposite conclusion in this case than I did in forty six Beacon. Because I think the conditions that argue for denial in forty six Beacon are the very ones that argue for approval. In this case, and so the reasoning is the same, even though the conclusion is different, opposite indeed.
Mark, just just to add one point that you forgot to mention, just for future applications is that. This was also not in the the building itself, right? Because that was one of the reasons why we denied that project.
Yes.
Proposing it to be in a building and historically, that would have not been appropriate to have a carriage house inside. The main building of a mansion like forty six Beacon Street or one oh one Pinkney Street.
That's right. Part of that decision, again, I did mention that it was proposed to be. The 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 opening made in the facade, so certainly the guideline was instructive in that case very directly because it was unambiguously. A facade, but. Also, in addition to even respective of the guideline, it was our conclusion. That this was not a historic feature of that house. It never had a garage in the house, to paraphrase what Nick said. And so, yes, thank you, Nick. And that 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 basic, I think, circumstance is not. Is clearly not implicated here. The the there's there's no implication that this is the rear facade of the house or ever was. Again, there's no, there's no record that there was ever a house on this spot either, that I think that's important in my conclusion about this as well, but if this was. Something that would irrevocably interrupt or or or. Misconstrue the architectural history of this portion of Myrtle Street, that would be one thing. I don't believe it does. I think it's. Generally consistent with our record of decision and the historical and architectural context.
Myrtle Street is one of the more hybrid streets on the hill. One moment it's service, the next moment it's residential, then it becomes commercial, then it becomes. It doesn't have a single identity.
It's interesting in that regard for sure. Yeah, the other backstreets are shorter, a lot shorter. And they, you know, they tend to be sandwiched in between lots that are otherwise pretty close, and this is, this is. Yeah, I mean, every, this is true of all of our applications, right? We have to look at the particular circumstances, but I think nevertheless, this portion. Right, to be clear, Ralph, I would not argue that the the portion of Myrtle Street most eastward from this. Is is or ever was a backstreet. But I'm pretty convinced that this certainly was and still is.
I've never, I, I, that's, this discussion we're having. That's the most startling statement that's been made this evening. I've driven that leg of Myrtle Street. Many times, it dates back when my sister lived ninety nine Myrtle. And which is nineteen fifties. So over those years, I've driven that street many, I never thought of it as backstreet. I thought of it as curiosity. But I never thought of it as a backstreet.
I think service street would be more appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, it's the backs of houses, it serves the backs of houses. Backstreet is not exactly a term of art, I appreciate, but it's, I think it's. Useful for this kind of conversation. Yeah, me, you know, so so like, well, there is literally a street in the back, in the back bay called Backstreet. The parallel Storo Drive behind Beacon, so that's maybe the cardinal example.
That's a great backstreet, I take. Many times.
And it's all garages.
The question is, you had a lengthy presentation by one, one negative. For, you know, position. And he presented many documents. Do you think that those documents need further review before a decision is made this evening?
I I don't, and I'll tell you why. So I think we can just stipulate that the curb cut is not ancient on the one hand, and that it does not. Demonstrate, prove, it's not probative, as Tom, my friend Tom Clemens said. As to there ever being a garage door in this location before. The applicant has not represented that there was ever a garage door there before. The applicant has ostensibly conceded that they have no evidence that there was a garage door before and that they don't, they simply don't know why the curb cut was installed. But they they're not claiming in any respect that it's somehow evidence that there was a garage door, that there ought to be a garage door. And so I think it it I I'm, I don't think. The specifics about the curb cutter really relevant because I reached my conclusion independent of. Any evidence that there was ever a garage door there.
He had several points he was making.
I agree with you. He had a lot of points and. You have to be fair because if we were to let one member of the public actually do a whole presentation. And share a screen, then we'd have to do that with everyone and we, unfortunately, we don't have time to do that with everyone. I'm not sure why we kind of walked away from something that we used to do in the commission. This is before. You came back on, Mark, but we used to pay attention, not just to how long something was there, but. Even if something came about in the fifties. It shows the growth in the history and development of the neighborhood and those things we would. Try to hold on to, that slipped away some years ago. I don't know why. And I don't want to sunk a broken record, but I feel like it needs to be said. We keep on coming across in various situations of a new opening coming about. And the more we say yes, the more the presentations come, and we keep on saying yes. That's all I've got to say, that's that's all I've got to say about it.
Okay, thank you, Ari. For what it's worth, let me just very quickly. On on the the subject of newer additions to the historic district, I think. No, it's an important point, and I think it's certainly appreciate you mentioning it, and it's worthy of mentioning. Even things that are not very old might nevertheless have value to. The the historic district and the story of the historic district.
Like the curb cut.
Yeah, so I think I would make a distinction, though, between those additions. That are particularly important and special. And perhaps unique or demonstrative of. Something rare or important in an architectural style, for example. The very large scale renovation of Suffolk University's Archer and Donahue Buildings. The 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 northerly of the two buildings, the big one, the Donahue Building. Was a huge but very rare example of mid-century modern architecture in the historic Beacon Hill District. And this commission ultimately was persuaded by arguments that that rarity of an otherwise important. But not rarely seen elsewhere style in the. In the district ought to be honored in its in its renovation. So in that case, you had a building that by virtue of its rarity and its specificity. And it's and it being the not sole, but almost the sole exemplar. Of what we now appreciate with, you know, seventy years of hindsight is indeed an important. Historical style and an important part of the story of architectural history. That that examples like that ought to be given some weight and consideration. And that we ought to lean toward preserving them. So yes, is the short answer to, does that matter? Even it doesn't matter, even if it's not a hundred and fifty years old, but I think. Where I come down is, it depends, like everything else, is it, not just is it old, but is it significant? Is it and and would removal of that, so you know, our decisions are sort of twofold, right? There's if you're gonna make an arc, a change to an architectural feature, you're gonna take something away and then you're gonna replace it with something else. For an application to succeed, I think it has to pass muster on both counts. The thing that you're taking away. Needs to be something where we're not removing important contributing. Historic fabric that the removal of which would somehow impede or disguise or blur or diminish. The understanding, the story of architectural history in the district. And then, so so it has to succeed on those grounds, but then there's the question, what are you putting back? In its place, and that likewise needs to, you know, pass the same test of architectural and historical appropriateness. I don't believe the bottom line is that this particular garden wall. Meets those criteria, that it that it's sufficiently rare, unique, contributing, demonstrative of of part of the story of architectural history. Such that it can't be altered in any way. And moreover, again. If they do this project, at the end of the day, there's gonna be no confusion that there was ever a garden wall here, because the garden wall will remain. Albeit with another larger opening in it, so we'll still know the story.
Well, here's the thing, everything you just said. I would have totally agreed with except for the one fact that, as we've already stated. We now have a garage being placed in a building that never had it before. Met all the criteria you just mentioned, and it's still happening. So how is it? That the thing that is very clearly should not be. Renovated, destroyed, manhandled, however you want to put it. That happened and it's, you know, out of our hands, we said no. Somebody said yes, and now it's happening. Now we have a chance to have, hold on to something. Okay. It has an odd history. Maybe nobody famous slipped on that wall, maybe, you know. Is simply part of the neighborhood, and why the curb cut? I mean, the fact of the matter is. It's not seventy years old, it might be a hundred and ten years old. Nineteen fifteen?
Not the curb cut, I don't think.
No, 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 the fact that a wall had been there. Isn't that something that was said earlier?
Yeah, the the it has been alleged that the wall may be as much as a hundred and fifteen years old, but there, we don't have definitive evidence of that. We have, we have informed conjecture.
But what I'm saying that we had definitive evidence and something that we all agreed and said no to, and guess what? It's now happening.
What are you referring to? I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Forty six?
Oh, I mean, that that, yes, it's happening, not because. We, again, I I think the circumstances in that case are demonstrably fundamentally different. In this case, it's happening because the city. Again, over my.
Oh, no, I understand why it's happening. My my whole point is this, the more we say yes to these things that. I mean, clearly, other commissioners had said no. Other commissioners, commissioners had said no, the same thing, having the same questions that we're having now.
But they haven't, no, just to be clear, there, there's no denial on record of of a proposal for a garage door in this location. There's a denial without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Different thing. There's no denial on record, it's a.
Oh, no, I understand, I understand, I understand. I just know my mind and how I'm going to vote, so we can move forward and do whatever needs to be done.
Thank you, Ari. Mister Chairman, Matt.
Yes, please, Chris Frango, please, go ahead.
I'm sitting here staring at these two images. And thinking of the impact it has. Whether we make a hole in the wall or we don't make a hole in the wall. whether we make a hole in the wall or we don't make a hole in the wall. You'll still have, as you say, we'll still have a wall. There, nothing is going to diminish. Nothing is really going to diminish the overall texture of the neighborhood. And the neighborhood, of course, is one of the things we are charged with preserving and defending. One, I believe that in cities, it is the inexorable life cycle for change. And, and in this district to have, to, to present, and I've used this phrase before, I believe in preservation and development, but development within the historic guidelines. And I think that this particular piece, while listen very carefully to the pros and cons that have been submitted, it's not going to change the sense of going by the fact that it's a wall. It's going to happen to have a door in it instead of a larger door in it than it does now. So I think I, I think it just, I guess in the end, not, not a matter. Uh, it's because the, the, because I say the scale, the texture, uh, the color of the street won't change. The door may be there and it'll be different, maybe it'll be painted black, maybe it'll be red, who knows what. Uh, I haven't heard that yet, but uh, I, I think, been a lengthy discussion. And I think you, some of us, Mr. Chairman and Ari, and the commissioners of others have spoken well. And I, I will support, I will support this proposal. Uh, my, my, my early, my earlier concern, which was brushed under the rug as not being appropriate to bring up about the collision of the doors, uh, that seems hours ago. It still is on my mind, but I hope that the the, the vote, uh, whatever it is, will include appropriate revisions according with our comments and constructive criticism. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Feingold. Uh, it sounds like we have a consensus. And uh, so I'm gonna move that the application be approved as submitted.
Second.
Okay, we will vote on the motion. Uh, Commissioner Allen.
No.
Mr. Feingold.
How, how did Commissioner Allen vote?
No. No.
Well, I would like to uh, have the motion amended that the proposer would consider the criticisms of which have been made earlier uh, and, and address them or review them with staff.
Uh, well, we're kind of in the middle of a vote here. We can't really do that procedurally, but which, can you be specific?
I'm voting for.
Okay, is that, is that a vote, though?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Jackson.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Okay, so the vote is three to one, so the motion to approve uh, is carried. Uh, thank you all, uh, the, the, the Sonys and uh, Aaron uh, and Tim uh, for your forbearance here and uh, for your thoughtful presentation. You'll get a letter from Nick summarizing our determination, as usual, uh, follow up with him directly if you have any questions. Thank you to the public for your patience uh, and your thoughtful comments and uh, sticking with us uh, for what is now uh, a lengthy hearing. We really appreciate, uh, that's very important to the functioning of this commission and the community. Uh, your spirited and thoughtful engagement is very appreciated. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, I think we are almost there. Administrative review, uh, I, as I flagged for Nick earlier, I'd need to recuse myself on one item which is thirty-six Beacon, because I'm in a butter. Any, uh, Ralph, you had a similar recusal on one of these?
On thirty-four Myrtle.
Thirty-four Myrtle, thanks. Uh, any other questions, comments, concerns about administrative review? Items? Uh, we'll take public comment. Want to be heard on the record?
Sure. Uh, looks like we do have two public comments. So first is Nancy. Nancy, go ahead.
This is just for the administrative review item approvals. Nancy, please go ahead.
Nancy? Go once.
Nancy can hear us? Did you wanna make a comment about the administrative review items? Any of them?
Okay, we, we need to move on.
Moving on. Rochelle.
Uh, Rochelle, go ahead.
Beacon Hill Civic Association, um, per thirty-one Anderson Street. We oppose the increase in jam width and would prefer accommodating the intercom outside the jam on the brick installed through mortar and not masonry, which would allow the double door replacement without altering the jam. It would also be appropriate for the replacement doors to emulate those of thirty-three Anderson Street as their sister buildings. End of comment.
Thanks. Um, so anyone have any questions about that? There um, was a formal approval by the commission to restore the doors. Um, actually, I can just bring it up. Uh, it was, what was, it was Anderson Street?
Uh, it is thirty-three, thirty, thirty-one Anderson, yes.
Thirty-one. Um, the commission previously approved these doors and they never built them. And um, they seemed appropriate, so I just put it under admin. So let me just pull that up here. Actually, is this, let me just see here. Um, yeah, so here. So, uh, so this is, so here's the approval uh, for thirty-one Anderson Street. Uh, and I'll show you the existing conditions. It's not a very nice store. Uh, Google's killing me. Let's see, one more time.
Yeah, it gets confused at corners sometimes.
It's red. So it's this wonderfully historic red door right here. Um, so essentially, they wanna restore it to um, its original condition, and which was so just a simple, straightforward door with a um, historic uh, trimsome light. And to me, this seemed like it was fine. Um, but if the commission disagrees, we can um, pull it and request that the applicant is um, returns in December. So that would be up to you.
What color are they gonna paint the door?
I believe it is, oh, uh, doors, uh, let's see, uh, door to be painted Benjamin Moore black and uh, painting the door surrounding Benjamin Moore uh, Stonington gray, which was the original approval.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. On it, on admin.
You know, do a red, Mr. Chairman?
Sorry?
I thought you liked variety of door colors.
I, I also, yeah, but like, I also like not requiring deferring to uh, historically appropriate colors when they're proposed.
Okay. If Nick's, if Nick's, Nick's agrees with it, it's okay with me.
Okay, very good. Any other objections to uh, leaving that on admin? Okay, very good. I think, uh, is that it for, yeah, I think that's it. Yes, okay, so uh, no more public comment. Okay, so uh, again, with the aforementioned recusals of Commissioner Kiefer on thirty-six uh, Beacon and Commissioner Jackson on uh, thirty-four Myrtle, I believe.
Is that, is that right, Mark? Or sorry, uh, Ralph, thirty-four Myrtle? Okay, thank you.
Uh, I will move uh, approval on mass of the administrative review items. Okay, we will vote. Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Feingold? Commissioner Jackson, our, uh, Commissioner Kiefer again recused on thirty-six Beacon, uh, eye on the rest. Okay, uh, administrative review items are approved. Thank you.
Great. Okay, um, just some quick business here that I wanna chat with everybody. Um, so just a reminder, um, when you're reviewing applications, if you're reviewing the applications, which you should be, um, you simply are gonna log into this portal here, and I'm just gonna give you a quick rundown. I won't spend too much time here, but just so you understand, um, when you're logged into the portal, you uh, are gonna click on Beacon Hill and then Hearing View, and then again Beacon Hill. And you're able to see um, all of the uh, applications along with my staff recommendations. Uh, you can also review the presentations and any other relevant information. You can do the same exact thing with administrative review, and then the same exact thing with advisory, if there are advisory reviews. So just a friendly reminder to do that. The other thing I just wanted to remind everybody, if you want, and I appreciate those of you that are reporting violations, um, but if you wanna make my job a thousand times um, easier, um, log onto the same portal, click on report or review violations and fill out this quick little form. If you're not comfortable, you can um, remain anonymous. You don't have to fill out this section here. Oh, I'm not showing my screen. Oh my God. Uh, okay. Okay, let's do it like this. Sorry, so um, portal, real quick, Commissioner view. Um, and then you just go to hearing view. What's that, Ralph?
Not yet. I'm seeing the tile pattern.
You seen, you're not, you're seeing this here?
I'm seeing a tile pattern of the participants.
Oh, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm seeing your, your portal, Nick.
You are?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, yeah, okay, so and you go under Hearing View, Beacon Hill, and you can review all my staff recommendations, including the history of the property and then the presentations to re- report violations. You click this button, fill out this quick form, and it'll send it to me. If you're ever curious if a property has an outstanding violation, this is for the public as well. Um, click on review violations, and you can check out every violation that we have. Um, spoiler alert, in Beacon Hill, there are a lot, um, but we will get to them. So, so that's that. Um, and then last but not least, um, just kind of some business in terms of the department. Uh, we have a new landmark almost, uh, which is Ferdinand's Blue Store over in Roxbury, um, which is currently the um, Department of Education. Um, that uh, landmark still requires the mayor and city council approval, but uh, we've worked closely with the uh, depart, uh, with the building, I'm sorry, with the education department, and we do not anticipate there being any problems. So, um, that is one of our newest landmarks that we regulate under um, the purview of the Office of Historic Preservation.
Very cool building.
Yeah. Uh, I'll get, I'll bring it up on the screen. How about that?
It's the uh, the, kind of the centerpiece of Nubian Square, right, right?
Yep.
Wraps the corner as that beautiful curved corner.
Oh, yes.
Really spectacular building.
Uh, I'll show you it real quick. Um, it's, it's, it really is a great building. It is only a facade. But it's, it's a beautiful facade. So it's this one right here. Hang on, I'll bring it up. Okay. It is this building here.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So it's, it's a really great design, um.
Was that the Bruce Bowen building at one point? What's it calling it that?
That, yep, that's also the name. Yep, it has multiple names. Yeah, so this is the um, the new part here, which is a really beautiful modern take. Um, and it attaches to the historic one on this side. So this is an official Boston landmark now, so. Cool, so that is it.
So, we have a problem. You and I have a problem. I'm looking at a tile pattern of the participants while you're talking about food now.
Uh-oh. Uh, does everybody else?
Well, you know what, Ralph? Go to the top of the screen where it says view. You see view? At the very top of your screen?
Now I'm not seeing the, uh, now it's just
Yeah, I just, oh, sorry, I just turned it off.
You just turned it off?
Okay, we'll figure it out.
Thank you for that, Nick. Uh, do a here a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
A second.
Second.
All in favor. Me opposed. Thank you all very much. It was a long evening, but a productive one. Appreciate it very much.
Happy Thanksgiving, guys.
Thanksgiving to you too.